Welcome, hopefully, the last city council meeting of 2017. Please rise for an invocation by Councilwoman Bonnie Katz, followed by the flag.
'Tis the season for love, kindness, and goodwill towards one another with hopes that it will continue on into the next year. We pray and ask for the Lord's guidance to make the best decisions for all. We've decked the halls with good wishes around and a wonderful life for those who are leaving our happy home. And as the night fell silent, we say farewell to our friends, family, and colleagues. They will be missed. To everyone else, we pray for peace and prosperity. So Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and a joyous Kwanzaa to all and to all a blessed holiday season.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Katz, for a moment there, I thought you were going to say "and to all a good night," and I was going to take a motion to adjourn. And we could go home really early. But alas. Next item on the agenda is approval of city council meeting minutes from budget sessions one and two on November 27th and 29th, 2017. Can I have a motion and second to approve this?
So move.
Second.
Here a motion and second. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank, please.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and those are approved. Next item on the agenda is limited courtesy of the floor. We've had no requests for that this evening, and so we can move on to the next item. I'm going to, we have a couple of representatives here with us this evening, so I'm going to move down to item 13, resolution authorizing design change between the city and Larson Design Group. Mrs. Frank in short form, please. Whenever you're ready. Sorry. Should have given you a warning.
Do you want mine?
Resolution to authorize the execution of bid awards for design and contract document preparation services of the Brandon Park Rehabilitation to Stahl Schaefer Engineering LLC.
Oh.
Wrong one.
Wrong one. This one's for Ways Garden.
We're doing Larson Designs.
Oh, okay. Wrong one.
Resolution authorizing design change order number two between the City of Williamsport and Larson Design Group for the Ways Garden Restoration Project.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and second to approve this?
So move.
Your motion and second? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, I didn't hear it. Ms. Holliday, how are you this evening?
Good, how are you? Good evening, city council and administration. This resolution is authorize the design change order number two between the City of Williamsport and Larson Design Group for the Ways Garden Restoration Project. Due to the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Committee Conservation Partnership Program requirement, that's a mouthful, for a minimum of three bids to be submitted to the city, the city council rejected bids on October 26th and authorized the advertisement for a rebid. This design change order will allow Larson Design Group to adjust the bid plans and along with, for the pavilion, for the proposed pavilion, along with the site improvements. This change order is in the amount of $7,500, and this was reviewed by Public Works as well as Finance with a positive recommendation.
Thank you.
Also, we have Chris Kaiser here representing Larson Design Group if you have any questions.
Thank you. Public Works, Mrs. Katz.
We did pass, we did discuss this at Public Works, and because of the lack of bids that came in the first time around.
Correct.
That we went with Larson Design and how we're going to scale this down, we're, I guess we're going to wait for the plans to come in so we can see what they're all going to look like at this point, because all we did was to get the bid confirmation here at this point. And that's all, you know, and we did pass this on with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Ms. Allison, Finance?
We covered the financial aspects of it, which were pretty simple. The original, there weren't enough original bids, and it was a little too expensive over budget, so that happens. You have to rethink things, and this is the redesign that will allow us to rethink things and rebid it, and still end up with a nice product in the end that complements the whole park. So we agreed on all the numbers and passed it to full body council with a positive recommendation.
Other comments or questions? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank, please.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Thank you, Mr. Kaiser.
Thank you.
Yep. Next item on the agenda is resolution to authorize a system-wide framework plan with AMAC. Got to give her more warning.
Yes.
I apologize, mine fell on the floor.
Oh, no. One of those days.
On the way in. Resolution to authorize a system-wide framework plan with AMAC Foster Wheeler Environment and Infrastructure, Inc.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and second to approve the resolution?
Second.
Here a motion and a second. Hello again.
This resolution is authorize AMAC Foster Wheeler Wood to begin work on the system-wide framework plan, or otherwise known as the SWIFT plan. In February of this year, the city submitted a letter of intent to the Army Corps of Engineers for conditional extension assistance program eligibility. This letter of intent allows the city a term of two years to complete the SWIFT plan. The SWIFT plan is to evaluate the northeast and northwest levee system in the city for rehabilitation assistance program. The SWIFT plan will be submitted to the Army Corps of Engineers for reinstatement to the assistance program. Approval by the Army Corps of Engineers will allow funds to be distributed for repairs made with the framework of the SWIFT. This plan will also help the city achieve the standard protection of the design in addition to reducing risk over time. This plan is the amount of and not to exceed $22,832. This was reviewed by Public Works and Finance with a positive recommendation. Also from AMAC Wheeler Foster Wood, I have a representative, James Barbris, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Allison, Finance, please.
Yes, we reviewed this in Finance, and, let me see here, yeah, this is part of the whole project of the levee, which, it's part of a $10 million project, but this is a small but important part, because this is a requirement, as Ms. Holliday mentioned, of the Army Corps of Engineers, a benchmark that we have to hit. And the one question we had, well, we had a couple of questions, but the one I can remember, because I asked it, was if this was going to be recurring debt, or not a recurring, a recurring requirement that was going to be, come up every few years or whatever, and at this point, that's not the case. Ms. Holliday said, as different parts of this whole project have shown, a lot of it is in reaction to Hurricane Katrina and the failure of the levee system in New Orleans brought the Army Corps of Engineers to want to look at structures all across the country. We're a part of that. We're, we have a levee, and they don't want to be, they don't want people subjected to a possible levee failure after seeing the disaster down there, and neither do we. We don't want the public exposed to that. So while some of this financially is onerous, because it's a big expenditure over a period of time, over a short period of time, that we really weren't counting on, it really, a lot of it is really maintenance and things that maybe if the money had been there, it could have been looked at earlier, but it, things evolve in life, and requirements aren't always understood in the same framework. And so now, we're looking at things in a different way. In the end, just like, I'm a little bit off course on the SWIFT thing, but I'm trying to put some context into this expenditure, in the end, we're looking at, I think, something similar to the original building of the levee system. Williamsport suffered a lot of damaging floods over the years till the levee system was built and people had the foresight to, to do that and, and see that the people were protected from those kind of damaging water events. Well, now, it just falls on us to, several decades later, make sure everything is up to snuff so that it's going to protect future generations, just as we've enjoyed it all these years and, and those before us. So this, the SWIFT scope and the system-wide framework plan, SWIFT is the acronym for that, is an important part that, that we need to do. So we pass it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Mrs. Katz.
This came to Public Works, and from what we understand, when this is completed, we'll also know where our cross pipes and relief wells are, and what will need to be done with that. That's very important, and I think that's, you know, we talked about this for so long with the relief wells and the cross pipes. One other thing was, we did come under budget, which is a good thing. The interesting thing is that we are under the Baltimore District, so, and they dictate what is done in our area here. But you, I don't remember, did you say two years that we're going to, this will be taking two years?
Yes.
Okay?
Yes. We have two years to have this plan completed.
And after that, then we'll have a better scope of what the total cost is going to be at that point. Right now, we're estimating that 10 million figure, but I think by the time this is all done, maybe it'll be less than that at this, we don't know. We don't know what it is.
Yeah, really, this is just coming up with the work plan, schedule, cost, and everything for the Army Corps of Engineers to present to them, saying, here are the, here are the things that you need to do, you need to do to bring it up, to meet the unacceptable pieces right now. So it's setting out the framework that they're going to follow and kind of hold you to down the line, but it will, it will line that up, and you will have the cost associated that within, you know, order of magnitude.
The question that I'll have to ask, you will be giving reports regularly on this, of what you're doing on a periodic basis, that we'll know exactly how many more relief wells you have to go through, how many more cross pipes and things like that. You're not going to just hit us at one at the end, will you? You'll keep us informed?
Yeah, it will provide updates. You know, this part, we don't anticipate taking that long to come up with the schedule and get drafts into the Army Corps of Engineers and discussing with them the pieces of it. That's, once we get that going, I think we, we should be able to have drafts and start that conversation with the Army Corps of Engineers, and then we have two years, two years to have it finalized.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Mr. Noviello.
I'm sure that by now, the public has heard us reference this issue of the levee for quite some time. They should now be aware of the fact that we're kind of at the mercy of the Army Corps of Engineers here in a lot of ways. There are expectations that primarily need to be met here. This is a smaller aspect of that whole process, as we said, but it's certainly an integral part of it nonetheless, and it factors into the overall project. But also, without my knowing all there is to know about it, I'm assuming that the further we get involved in inspecting and addressing the levee system itself, that we might find some alternative mitigation processes that are out there that we're not aware of now. And the closer we look at these issues, and the closer we look at that particular structure, and the things that are going to be developing out of that, we might find that we're on a pretty good learning curve here, I'm thinking. And if we can find any way to alleviate further costs and further expenditures down the line, why, I think it's our responsibility to do that. So this is, hasn't, obviously not easy to, is not hard to support, so this is a good part of a larger good plan, I think.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to keep going out of order, just because it's fun to watch Mrs. Frank.
Too many Christmas cookies.
Too many Christmas cookies. And Mr. Smith wasn't able to be here this evening, so I'm going to introduce and recognize a resolution honoring him and his service to the city. And I'm going to read it instead of Mrs. Frank in full. So, resolution honoring Councilman in Clifford Skip Smith. Whereas Skip Smith has served with distinction as a member of Williamsport City Council from January 2nd, 2008 through January 2nd, 2018, and whereas Skip Smith has provided invaluable leadership as a member of Williamsport City Council on behalf of the citizens of Williamsport for 10 years. And whereas Skip Smith will be remembered for his efforts and dedication to all aspects of city government, particularly in matters pertaining to public safety and public works in the City of Williamsport and through his service and leadership on numerous committees, including Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, Chairman of the Public Works Committee, Greater Williamsport Alliance, Housing Needs Committee, Blighted Property Commission, Board of Health Committee, Officers' Employees Pension Board, and the Police Pension Board. And whereas Skip Smith has generously shared his experience and expertise as an electronics and communications engineer to the benefit of the City of Williamsport, going above and beyond the expectations or responsibilities of a member of city council. And whereas Skip Smith has served with the best interest and welfare of the citizens of the City of Williamsport as his goal. And whereas, as a result of the services of Skip Smith, the City of Williamsport, a city with a proud past, is left with a more promising future. Now therefore, our meeting, this symbol, this 14th day of December 2017, Williamsport City Council does hereby acknowledge and express on behalf of the citizens of the City of Williamsport, our deep appreciation and gratitude for his substantial contributions to our community, both as a citizen and as a city councilman, and our best wishes for his future endeavors, as his leadership and involvement on Williamsport City Council will be sorely missed. And I ask for a motion and a second to approve this resolution.
So move.
Second.
Any comments, any additions my colleagues would like to add? Mr. Noviello?
Just quickly, I was able to sit on the, two of those committees with Mr. Smith, Public Works and Public Safety, and all the commentary that we just heard is spot on. He definitely, certainly, in the course of his 10 years here, has saved the city a good sum of money, probably more than we would be willing to add up, and his expertise has saved us money in the long run as well. So going to be a missed sort of component to our, our directions up here, and we'll now find out what it is to work without him and work with someone who will step in his place, and I'm sure Mr. Slaughter will fill that gap well, and we're looking forward to that. But I do want to take just a minute to quickly thank Mr. Smith for all the input that he gave to me, some of the knowledge I obtained from him, and some of the skills, frankly, that he gave me over the course of these 10 years. So just a quick note of thanks to him. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Mr. Allison.
I didn't know Skip personally when I first got elected to council, but we ran together because he filled a two-year term, and then we were in the same cycle, so I got to know him as, a little bit as we campaigned, but I got seated next to him when I first got on council. So over a period of time, we got to know each other better and, and talk about things non-council related and just as one person to another, which I think is the most important kind of communication you can have if you're going to, to work together. And I just want to say, I was also first put on the Public Safety Committee that Skip was on at the time, and, and we got to work on a lot of projects. And then Mr. Noviello came on, and the three of us worked on the first big project, I remembered, the Spillman Communication System, and Skip led the, the charge on that and really gave a lot of his time and effort and expertise on that, a lot of extra time. And over the course of my tenure on council, I saw that repeated over and over again with Skip. When there was a project that, that he had some knowledge, technological knowledge that he could lend a hand on, he, without question, gave of himself untold hours. I wouldn't even begin to be able to estimate how much money he saved the city in, in that respect. And, and I always respected that about him. I respected his approach to council, and having him leave council, and these are elected positions, so things change from time to time, people leave for one reason or another. But I just want to say, over the last, these last four years, I think this council that Skip was a part of has really, of necessity, come together and tried to work as one to, to move the city forward and face challenges, some unique challenges that, that the city government and the city as a whole faced over that time. And that, it brought camaraderie between us, because we couldn't afford to be petty with each other, we couldn't afford to, to take minor offenses and let them separate us. We worked hard to communicate, to, to work together, and to, to get things done when they needed to get done in this city. And I always remember Skip as a part of that. He was a big part of that, and sorry to see him go. I'll definitely take time to see him in person and, and convey my feelings on that. But if you're watching tonight, Skip, job well done, and we wish you the, the best in the future.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Mr. Henderson.
I appreciate Skip's thoroughness, I guess I can say. I'm a big picture guy. He's right into the details, and, and so because of that, he and I are, are very different. And so I was able to learn a lot, I think, from him and his perspective in that regard. I remember him saying often, "The devil's in the details," and he was one to chase those devils out. And, and we appreciate that. And, and really, I think setting the bar high for us to do our homework, to, to get into those details, to, to look at every word, to be thorough, I think it's important. And, and so I do appreciate his, his leadership in that regard and, and what I have learned from him in, in that aspect. And so I, I'll, I'll miss that, and, but we'll do the best we can to chase those devils out without them. But, but thank you, Skip, for your work, and we appreciate it.
Other comments or questions? Mrs. Mealy.
Just said, I, I was surprised to find myself partway through my, the past eight years on council, really appreciating Skip and, and what he added to city council. As a Democrat, of course, I was wary of all of you when I first got elected. And.
Likewise.
But, but no, but anyway, I, I, I will truly miss Skip here on council, and I certainly hope that he continues to lend us his expertise and his attention to detail from, from off the, off the bench here moving forward.
Any other comments, Mrs. Katz?
I think we all realize that Skip did put his blood, sweat, and tears into everything that he did for the city. He did have the, the best of, in his heart, of what he wanted to do for the city, and I think what you say is, he was very detail-oriented, and there were times that the details were long, and we, we grew to understand the length of the details. But I think we, at times, we did appreciate it, okay? And we are going to miss him in a lot of things that he's done. And, and I, I know he's going to continue on with, with his love. I mean, he's got his business, but we are, you know, he's done his best, he really did. He gave his heart to, to the city. And I think that's all you can do. I mean, it's an elected official, and he will be missed.
And I guess I'll conclude by saying, I guess I served amongst the existing members of council the longest with Skip. He joined council soon after I did. And as long-term spectators of city council will know, we didn't always see eye to eye. But I think over the years, we grew to respect each other's perspectives. I know I respected and trusted in, in those strengths that my colleagues have suggested in terms of those attention to details, his technical expertise, his passion, both, especially on issues related to public safety and, and public works. And I knew that, my big-picture perspective as well, I could rely that somebody has worked out the, the, you know, was this, were these the best options available under this state contract versus that state contract, and, and in terms of those kinds of things. And I could feel comfortable on focusing my attention elsewhere. And so I think he very much contributed to what Mr. Allison indicated was a strong teamwork approach that we've had over the last number of years. And change is hard, because you develop routines and you learn to rely on, on your colleagues in one way or the other. And so I'm looking forward to figuring that out again with a slightly different team, and I have confidence that we can build another good team. But it's going to be different, and, and, you know, in the first year or two, I don't know that I would have felt the way I do now in terms of missing those contributions and respecting his contributions as much as I do now. But if Skip is watching, thank you for all you've done for the city. So if there are no other comments, then Mrs. Frank on the resolution, please.
Mrs. Mealy.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the resolution is approved, and I will take this pre-signed version of the resolution to Skip and to Faith and present it to them myself, unless that has to be filed in some official way first. Okay, good. And so let me go ahead and just move to the next item, a couple items on the agenda, and then we'll probably get back to the regular order. So the next item on the agenda is resolution to approve a budget for the Government Study Commission.
Can you find that? Resolution to approve the Government Study Commission budget. Whereas the Government Study Commission was elected by the voters of the City of Williamsport to study the formal government and provide the taxpayers with their findings and recommendations. Whereas the Government Study Commission is requesting from the City of Williamsport an amount not to exceed $12,000 for the services they will be providing to the voters of the City of Williamsport. Now therefore, be hereby resolved that the city council president and city solicitor are authorized to execute this resolution.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution?
So move.
Second.
Here a motion and a second. And I guess I'm presenting this. We, the voters, of course, approved two different commissions in November's election, and they have gotten right to work in terms of meeting and organizing themselves and getting to the point where they could understand what their expenses are going to be in the coming months, in the coming fiscal year. And, and some of those are kind of just straightforward clerical expenses, some of them, a significant share of them are advertising. Some of them, a significant share of them are, um, advertising because they're required to have publicly advertised meetings, just like city council is. And, um, uh, and so both of them put together budgets, um, that are remarkably close to each other in size. Um, uh, doing a good job requires the expenditure of a little money. In the grander scheme of things, um, 11,000 or $12,000 in 45 years to study the form of the government is probably a reasonable number. Um, doing it twice is a little bit weird in one year, um, but that's what the voters chose, and so, uh, uh, it is our responsibility, city council, to approve, um, or amend, um, the budgets. Um, I think that they, there is a, a requirement under the law that we, um, only, um, that we grant their recommend, their, uh, requests, uh, so long as we deem it reasonable. Um, and, uh, and so, uh, this was presented to, I believe, the Finance Committee for review, uh, this week, and so I'll ask Ms. Mealy, uh, Ms. Mealy to give her report.
Uh, we did review both, ahem, both items, and perhaps it would be wise us to talk about them somewhat jointly, really, because they're very similar, um, in both scope and methodology, I suppose. Um, we were fortunate, um, Allison Hirsch actually came to discuss and to explain the budget for particularly the Government Study Commission. Um, and, uh, and consequently, we came to, I suppose, a better understanding that, uh, not only does the budget seem relatively reasonable, given the scope of work, but, ahem, that particular, that both commissions are attempting to both work together to save money and/or, um, get, don't receive, get donated items to make up to save money. I know Allison in particular referenced, they were hoping to get a digital recorder donated. They were hoping to, um, make use of, uh, where the heck's Mr. Maro, oh, Maroney's not out there, huh? Um, trying, going to try and get as much free coverage in the Sun Gazette as they could, um, in addition to the advertising, try and get out the word without having to spend more money. And, um, I, you know, while that may or may not happen, it, it was nice to know that they were trying as much as possible to save money in, in all these efforts and still reach as wide a number of people as possible within the community to get input on, um, their feelings. Uh, uh, that said, Finance, um, did pass this to the full body of council with a positive recommendation, ahem, and a note that, that the scope of both, both budgets is similar, though they're worded slightly differently. Um, though the, though the items are outlined slightly differently, both of them have more or less the same approach and, and the same ideas.
And so the committee's recommendation applies to both?
Yes, the committee's recommendation was applied to both.
That way we'll save time.
Are you saying I should shut up and stop talking about it? Next time?
Anything further to add? Comments or questions about either, uh, the Government Study or the Charter Commission budget? I'm starting to remember the two separate terms and know which is which. Mr. Allison?
Um, uh, one of, uh, on, on the financial side, one of the good things, uh, is our city clerk is, um, has taken it upon herself to, um, apply, uh, begin the grant process for DCED, who, uh, we were encouraged early on by Ed Fosnot from DCED, who helped guide us through this, uh, and we're ever grateful for that, uh, gave his knowledge that, um, there were possible funds available from DE, DCED, uh, for us to apply and at least subsidize in part. I'm not sure how much. We, we don't know exactly. It'd be great if it was all of it, but, um, in any case, it would help, uh, mitigate some of the, the total costs. So, um, we're grateful to, uh, our city clerk for taking that, uh, step forward and making the context, and she's gonna, uh, write the grants. And, um, so keep that in your thoughts and prayers and hopes, and, uh, wishes for this Christmas, um, that we can get that money. Um, and, uh, I, it's, um, it may have never been done before. We've said that before, that in the state of Pennsylvania, that one city had, uh, two questions of this nature on the ballot at the same time. Certainly, both never, they, it never happened that both passed. Uh, so we're in uncharted territory, um, which, uh, democracy isn't always predictable, and that's a good thing, because, uh, it, it, it allows us to, uh, to express ourselves and to look into things and find out things that maybe we didn't think we'd, were even going to look at in the first place. So, um, over the, as we approve this, it just moves everything forward, and we're going to find out a lot about not just our present form of government, but other options available. And, uh, and it behooves the citizenship to, there's going to be plenty of opportunity to keep informed as we go along, and, uh, we're just encouraging everybody to do that at least at some level, um, and be a part of the process, because this is, this is real, folks. Uh, it's a, not just a study that's going to go up on a shelf somewhere, it's a study that's going to produce, um, a vote, uh, in 2018, in November of 2018, that, um, could chart our course for the future, could change it, could keep it the same. It's going to be up to the voters and the commissions with their recommendations.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Ms. Mealy?
Uh, just that, as I'm sure everybody on council appreciates already, um, DCED has, uh, the Department of Community and Economic Development through the state has, has, uh, been truly invaluable to us in this effort. Um, and I think that it says something, um, about governance at the state level as well. Um, how, it, it, it's just been fascinating to me how, how interested there is, uh, how much interest there is at the state level in cities understanding their options and their rights and their abilities, um, as cities. And I think that, um, frankly, it's, it's impressed me. I've always thought of Pennsylvania as not being a particularly, um, progressive state in that way, but I, but I really think that, that there's been a lot of, of outreach from the state and, and a lot of willingness to work with us. And, uh, and it excites me to think that perhaps they will then also help guide us to, to a good path in addition to our voters, that is to say, help us to, to find the best answer and not try and find a, a cookie cutter solution for the, for the city.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Hearing none. Uh, Mrs. Frank on the first resolution.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
No.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Uh, yes, and the resolution is approved. Um, uh, next item on the agenda then is resolution to approve the budget for the Charter Commission Study.
Resolution to approve the Charter Commission budget. Whereas the Charter Commission was elected by the voters of the City of Williamsport to study the charter of the City of Williamsport and provide the taxpayers with their findings and recommendations. Whereas the Government Study Commission is requesting, the Charter Commission is requesting from the City of Williamsport an amount not to exceed $12,000 for the services they will be providing to the voters of the City of Williamsport. Now therefore be hereby resolved that city council president, city solicitor, are authorized to execute this resolution.
Uh, thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to approve this resolution?
No move.
Second?
Hearing motion and a second. Uh, anything further to add? No? Uh, other comments, Mr. Allison?
In all our gratitude, we want to thank those who ran for the commissions, um, and are going to donate their time and their expertise to research these things, and, uh, it's going to be, uh, I believe, money well spent, and I've met most of the people, and they're conscientious, uh, they're dedicated, and, um, uh, they're going to look for as much information as they can find to help us make the best decision we can as, uh, voters and citizens. And when it comes to that, um, I'm going to be in the, and other council members in the same boat as all the other citizens in Williamsport. We're going to be digging into it and listening to what they have to say and, uh, forming our opinions based on that, uh, for when we vote next November. That's all.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
No.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Uh, yes, uh, and that resolution is also approved. Um, uh, all right, let's get back to the regular agenda to make Mrs. Frank's, uh, life a bit easier. So, uh, we'll return back to the top of the agenda, um, uh, related to, um, ordinance and final reading of the various operating budgets of the city. Mrs. Frank, in short form, please.
And the ordinance adopting various operating budgets for the City of Williamsport, including the General Fund, Utility Fund, WBT Capital Projects, Capital Projects Fund, Liquid Fuels Fund, City Hall Operating Fund, WBT Planning, Unemployment Compensation Fund, Debt Service Fund, Trade and Transit Center Act 13 Fund, and Pool Repairs Capital Fund.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance and its final reading, please?
No move.
Second?
Hearing motion and a second. Mr. Nichols, how are you this evening?
Fine, thank you. How are you?
Good.
Do you have a Christmas shopping done?
Um, just about. I, uh, last thing is coming into a, a, a local Williamsport business, um, hopefully tomorrow, and so as soon as I pick that up, I will be done, except for some things I'll be picking up next Tuesday.
Is it on Pine Street or no?
Uh, one is on Pine Street, one is on Fourth Street.
Okay.
So I'm, uh, I'm this close.
Okay. Well, thank you.
How about you? I'm sorry, I shouldn't have asked.
Just dragging on.
You don't want to ask.
Okay.
No, you don't want to ask.
What, what did you ask Anna for this year?
He's going to Arizona.
A new life?
A bowl game win, for once?
New bowling ball.
Oh, okay. All right. Uh, so do you have anything further to add?
No, this is a second reading, 12 different, uh, operating budgets. This will provide the necessary appropriations for 2018. There were two budget review sessions and the first reading last week, so we're asking for your consideration on the second reading of this ordinance.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm, because I was unable to make it last week, I, if, uh, my colleagues will allow, I thought maybe I would start, um, uh, with a couple of things. One, I think, and the reason I went out of order the last couple, uh, items is, uh, to make, uh, a couple amendments related to those commission budgets. Um, I'm going to ask both, particularly, um, our finance department, um, but also double-check with our solicitor, does it make sense now that we've approved those budgets to fund a separate line item for each commission so that, uh, we can track those expenditures specifically?
Absolutely.
The accountant says yes, the lawyer says...
Paul Dier.
Was going to say something else, but changed his mind on the spur of the moment?
No. I, 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 um...
You need five votes to increase a line item, four to decrease.
Right. And, um, uh, one of the things that, um, uh, I, I think the place where, um, um, there was discussion between administration and council to have some money available, uh, in the case that the budget, uh, from the commissions came through is from legislative contingency, um, which is on page, oh, um, uh, on city council's budget on page nine. Thank you. Um, and so I am going to, uh, ask to re, uh, for a motion, or I'm going to make a motion to reduce, uh, legislative contingency line item on page nine by $23,560. Did I add that up on my head real fast correctly? Mr. Pavlak, did I add?
No.
Oh, okay. Uh, 11,000 plus 11,000 is 22,900, and plus 660 is, uh, 1,560, so that's 23,560, right? That's my intention, is to add up those two numbers in case I did that wrong. Um, so my motion is to reduce legislative contingency on page nine by that amount. Can I have a second?
Second.
Hearing motion and a second. Um, the intention, of course, is to then create those two lines wherever Mr. Pavlak suggests we create them, um, if we reduce that line item by that amount. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Uh, Mrs. Frank on, uh, the reduction, motion to reduce, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
No.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Uh, yes, and, uh, the motion carries. Um, so then my next motion is to create and fund, uh, a line item on page, not also on, under city council?
Two sets.
Okay. Um, uh, for the Government Study Commission, uh, and fund it with, uh, 11,900. Can I do both, two separate lines, or should I do them separately?
If the justice tribe would love this one, it does.
Oh, okay.
If the justice tribe would support it too, we'll call it a max.
Oh, I see. Okay, so I'll do them separately. So the first one is 11,9 on page nine, under a line item called Government Study Commission. Can I have a second on that one?
Second.
Hearing motion and a second. Comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
No.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, uh, and that, uh, motion carries. Next, uh, motion I have is a res, uh, to, not a resolution, uh, to, uh, create and fund a line item on page nine called the Charter Commission, um, and, uh, fund it with $11,660. Can I have a motion and a second? Or I've made the motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Uh, to approve that amendment. I hear a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
No.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and, uh, that, uh, motion also carries. Um, so, uh, here's a broader set of thinking. Um, uh, a couple of weeks ago, when we had the budget sessions, um, we had a, a lengthy set of discussions about, um, the need for long-term planning, um, to make, ensure that, uh, the city's budget is sustainable over time. And, uh, heard my colleagues, um, and, uh, Mr. Nichols have that conversation about, you know, that it would be desirable to have a five-year budget planning process. In fact, I've heard some good ideas even today about setting an ad hoc group that might focus their attention on that, uh, in the coming year. Um, but we had, we don't have it right now, and so I sat down, uh, in the intervening time, uh, with my budget books, and I've got quite the stack of them now, having been on council now for 10 budgets, I think, um, including this one. Um, and tried to guess with the limited information I have, because I'm not the finance department, not the administration, but be able to make educated guesses about at least one year ahead in terms of what budgets look like. And so let me just, without going through all my math, which is here, um, uh, let me kind of walk through the parts of the things that I calculated. Um, we all know that in the, in the budget, uh, we see an end-of-the-year number, um, at, at this time of the year for the following year, and it looks scary. Um, even after the changes council has made, um, we have a planned end-of-the-year budget of $186,000 by the end of next year, and that's on a $25 million-plus budget. Um, that's well below what we should have to be safe, given the unexpected. Um, but we also know that, um, through some good work out of the finance department, um, there is efforts over the course of the year to underspend and over, and, uh, you know, the treasurer's office to raise additional money above, um, the budgeted numbers. And so by the time the audit rolls around, by the time the match budget year rolls around, there's often a, a little more, uh, in the bank than the plan was. And, you know, for a long time, I've expressed discomfort, uh, having that number change as much as it does, but, um, we've, we live a little dangerously, um, by kind of expecting, um, that that will happen, um, year in and year out. And over the last five years, uh, that number has averaged about $1.6 million of, of saved or found money between what was budgeted and, and what the, the balance, uh, ends up being able to accomplish. So, we, we can put that into projections if we say that next year will look like the last five years I have on average. Um, and then we, we know what we get out of, pretty reliably, what we get out of, um, property taxes, about, um, 12, almost 13 million dollars at current tax rates. Um, we know what we get out of non-property tax revenue, um, about, uh, 11 and a half million dollars, um, on average. And in fact, we, I was able to calculate that, for the last five years, we've averaged about a $300,000 increase per year. Now, will next year we get 300? I don't know, but it's a reasonable estimate that, uh, that'll grow over time. And so what I reasonably estimated, I think, having done all the math, is by the time we, uh, have a 2019 budget book in front of us next fall, we will have $26.6 million available to us. That's money left over from the 2018 budget, um, plus the expected revenue in 2019, at current rates. We can also reasonably, I think, estimate what our expenses will be, because over the last five years, um, uh, we... last five years, um, uh, we have averaged about a $1.2 million increase in, uh, budget expenses. Some years are better than that, or, or slower growth than that, and some years the growth is faster. But on average, it's about $1.2 million. If you take what the, this budget estimates expending for 2018 and then adds the $1.2 million, we're, we'll probably see, unless we change things, uh, a, a, a plan that, uh, expect to spend about $28.3 million in 2019. So if you've tried to keep up with all of those crazy numbers, um, we'll have $26.6 million to spend and we'll have a plan that will spend $28.3 million. Um, it was already a deficit because, right, uh, you, you would start with a dollar figure. Um, but, uh, in terms of revenue and expenses, it was going to be a big decimate, uh, deficit. But if we project this year's budget plan out to next year, we'll not only have a deficit, we will have to borrow $1.7 million to pay the bills, or raise taxes $1.7 million, which by the way is two mils, 14% or so, uh, uh, tax increase next year if we don't do anything. Or, um, well, uh, we'd have to do the math, but how many people, and if 80% of our budget is personnel cost, how many people would have to get laid off to make $1.7 million in one year? That's why you'd look at, uh, long-term estimates and, you know, the mayor has not wanted to do that, uh, in his time in office. But, uh, we've, council has worked hard to find ways to, to figure it out over the years. We've cut a lot of fat out of the budget. There's not any fat. I struggle to find $10,000 in a $25 million budget of fat. Where to meet? Um, and, and there's only three ways that can change, and this is all information that people pay attention, know. Um, one way to change that is to increase taxes. Another way to change that is to spend less money, cut things that you were already doing. And a third way to do it is economic growth. And for, some people will say economic growth can change everything in a year. It can't. You can't grow fast enough to make up the $1.2 million in extra expenses year in and year out. Um, but what you can do, and, and we heard Mr. Nichols talking about this, is slow incremental change to make a dent in things. Well, i- if by the end of 2018, we would be looking at a 2019 budget that's $1.7 million in the hole, we can either wait until then and cut a lot of meat all at once and hope, hope that something changes between now and then. Or we can take smaller bites, painful bites, but less painful bites ahead of time. So with $1.7 million to think about, I had to, I spent a lot of time thinking about what, how would I take that in bites over a two-year period if you spread it out a little bit? Um, one way to do it, and I'm not doing this tonight, uh, is one mil increase right now. I could make a motion, I probably wouldn't have the votes, I wouldn't even vote for it. Um, but a mil increase to not eat would raise seven, $873,000 this year w- uh, extra. Uh, it would raise $873,000 extra next year, and we would pay, uh, for that deficit. That's my best guess. I haven't accounted for things I don't know about, but based on historic patterns over the last five years. That's one way you could do it. You could do it a different way with taxes. You could go, all right, if we did two-thirds of a mil this year and two-thirds of a mil next year, that would pay for it. I can't afford that. Most people I know can't afford another mil this year, or two-thirds plus two-thirds over the next few years. All right? Well, can, what can we cut to do it? Well, I stopped counting. It's seven people that we'd have to lay off to get halfway there over two years. Halfway. And so, uh, you know, I've talked to several of my colleagues and, and we've struggled over this question. Um, and I want to hear them think about it and talk about it some more tonight. Um, but I, I think if we're responsible, we try to take a bite off tonight. So, in some combination. Spending less means doing less. That's painful because we've come to expect the effective work that we see out of our departments, um, in city government. Raising taxes means taking a bite out of everybody's wallet. And we take, we all know how big a bites we're already taking out of my wallet, your wallet, everybody's wallet in terms of taxes. We're, we're, we're in a situation that's a no-win situation. But it, the sooner we try to address it in a structural form, um, the easier each bite becomes to endure. Um, so, uh, I'm not going to make a specific proposal yet, but I, I challenge my colleagues to think out loud about it and to think which of those bites is the least painful, the most palatable, and the most responsible. So, uh, are there comments or questions?
Bonnie's going first.
Mrs. Katz?
You know, we, we kind of touched on this in finance from the standpoint of, you know, we hear the word hope. Well, you know, we hope that things are going to happen, hope that, you know, there are things that, that will come to the city. We're hoping that, you know, businesses will come. Well, you know, e- even if this ti- does come to fruition, it's, as you say, it's still going to take a lot of time for that financial end to, to build up. You know, I've listened to Mr. Nichols and Mr. Pavlov about how much, you know, we're in a deficit at this point. And with each year, the deficit keeps on growing. And, you know, we're going to reach a point where, you know, we're not going to be able to sustain anything at this point. Um, you know, I know we, we look at, you know, what the, our, our biggest, one of our biggest expenses is, is, uh, employment and also, uh, retirement. Now with employment, I, you know, it, it, having my own business, I've gone through places in my life where we've had to lay off people due to circumstances. But un, and it, and it breaks your heart to do that. You, it really does. And we look at what we have in our own city, uh, as far as our employees go. Um, most of our employees work the hardest. Uh, they, again, they give their blood, sweat, and tears to the, to, to the growth and keeping our city afloat. Uh, I don't know where we would go with something like that. We have, you know, our fire, our police, our codes officers. Uh, you know, it's, you know, where do you go? Where do you draw the line of how you, what, what do you take away? Um, it's really a difficult question. It really is. But with each passing year, if we don't go in small increments with a tax increase, each year this is going to get worse. And, and we are going to hit this head-on one of these, one of these years where we're going to have to really cut down with a lot more personnel than we really wanted to see. Maybe if we do a small in- increment here of a tax increase, maybe that will, uh, help alleviate some of the pain, but also work on economic development. Um, go that, that extra route to see what else we can bring into the city to bring income in. Um, but, um, I'm, I'm really for what Mr. Nichols has proposed for a long time. And I know there have been, uh, council people in the past that have said continuously, small increments will help with the bottom line. And I really feel that we should go a small increment at this point to at least stall what will happen in 2018 and 2019. And that's all I have to say at this moment. But it's a hard choice. It's a hard decision.
Thank you. Other comments? Mr. Noviello?
Obviously, no tax increase goes down easily. And, uh, we can do our best to explain the, the logic and the rationale behind it. Uh, it's still going to affect people where it affects them the most in their pocketbooks, uh, including everyone sitting up here. Uh, I'm wondering just on the periphery of all this, where we might be had we begun a quarter mil increment, uh, 10 years ago. Uh, I'm guessing we probably wouldn't be facing, at least not as dire situation as we are currently facing. Uh, so that's something as food for thought. Uh, in part, this is also, in my mind, a further incentive for all of us as taxpayers, uh, to begin to take our case to our state representatives with regard specifically to, uh, some meaningful pension reform, which will relieve a lot of concern for cities our size that are struggling to get through that. I think we've mentioned before, and I, forgive me, my figures aren't exact, but I think, uh, we might be lucky if this council has the ability to deal with about 18 to 20% of our overall budget, as far as what we can do with regarding manipulations and, and moving things around and such, because the rest of it is sort of set in granite. Uh, so, uh, I, again, as I said, swallowing any tax is, is tough to do, but certainly a quarter of a mil, uh, is much more easy to deal with than a two mil or even frankly, a two-thirds mil increase at this point in time. So, uh, as much as it's difficult to, uh, support any tax increase, uh, I think this is the lesser of any evil that we've been faced with up to this point. Uh, so I can, I can see my way clear to, uh, subscribing to and supporting that, um, in, in hopes that, uh, our, uh, our constituents and taxpayers understand the situation that we're facing here. None of this is decisions that we enjoy making or even want to be in a position to make. Uh, maybe this is the first step towards making some of the changes that we've referenced here so far tonight and, uh, open the door to those opportunities and up for us to, uh, step through that door and make some of these things happen. The first, uh, sort of step I would think would be looking at that potential five-year plan, uh, and where that will take us. Uh, as a historian, I'm always one who wants to look in the past first. Uh, we never know really where we are standing presently until we know exactly where we've come from. It also helps us with the further trajectory as we're heading into the future as well. So I would like us to take a good, strong look at the last five, maybe even 10 years, to see where we've come from, to put ourselves in this situation, and use that information as a backdrop to, uh, looking into a newer direction and maybe some new, uh, methodologies and, and new ideas and concepts that might bring us out to, uh, this, yeah, a bit more happily than we are today here. So, I'll leave my comments at that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Um, uh, com, other comments or questions? Mr. Henderson? I was looking that way first.
I don't really want to comment now, but I mean, I have to say something.
That's what I thought when I saw your hand. I'm good.
Yeah, exactly. It's somewhat depressing to me, uh, when, uh, and again, I hate to be, uh, negative, but if it were, if it would take cutting seven people to get halfway to where we need to be, that means we are...
That's just this year.
That's just this year. That means we are 14 people over budget in a way. How, how do we, how did we get here? Uh, this is, this is a, a sad state, uh, where we find ourselves. See, our problem is, is that we do not know how to live within our means. So we, okay, with, the easiest change is to raise our taxes. That's the easiest thing to do, and that's what we've been doing. But we haven't controlled our spending so that the more we raise and increase our taxes, the more we're going to feel allowed to spend. And it's, it's really troubling. I, I know it's, it's, it's not feasible to make the necessary cuts right now, uh, to bring us down to where we are financially solvent. It's, we are too far in the hole to do that. Uh, that is a problem. And so I, I can't, you know, I mean, I, I wish I could just say, well, let's just do that and get back to where we need to be. Um, but, you know, our decisions up to this point have, have led us to this place, and now we're thinking, now what do we do? Wow. I, I don't know. Even if, even if we were to raise taxes, my greatest fear is that we would feel at ease next budget to spend just a little bit more, and to keep spending a little bit more. And we keep perpetuating this, this cycle. Uh, so it's, you know, I, I'm at a, I'm at a loss at this point. Um, we've talked about having a, a five-year plan, uh, and, and again, I, I think we need to start that process now. That's long-term. Um, but what do we do now? Well, I'm not sure we can do anything else except raise taxes. Even if we were to cut some personnel, we can't afford to cut seven, much less 14. We can't afford that. Um, you know, we, and so we're, we're kind of stuck. We are stuck with raising taxes either now or next year, and every year after that. Uh, that's, that's kind of where we're stuck. I'm not sure there's a big, there's an, there's another way out. I don't think we can wish economic growth enough, uh, to get our way out of this either. Uh, so it's, it's dire. I'll look forward to hearing my other colleagues' comments.
Um, perhaps it's actually fitting that Mr. Henderson and I sort of faced off there with our hands in the air because I, I think we do have a, a certain level of disagreement about, um, government living outside its means. While, while I agree with you that clearly we have, we are providing more services than our tax base concurrently allow us to provide. Um, and while I agree with you that increasing taxes is a, is an, is a limited option, if an option at all. Um, although I, as, as, as you've said, I would, I would support an, an incremental tax increase with the idea that that is an easier pill perhaps to swallow for all of us who are taxpayers in the city than, than a large jump at some point in the near future. Um, on the other hand, what I would say is that when looking at the position that we currently find ourselves in in the city with X number of employees and in X number of departments, um, all of which is, is more than what we can, what we can budget for, um, one of the important things to look at is a kind of historical analysis. That is to say, Williamsport is a city, um, the population of which has been shrinking over the last few years. Um, unfortunately, that has not changed the size of the community, the number of amenities that we offer, um, such, such as parks, um, and, and recreation options. Um, you know, we, we still have the same surface area. We still have a lot of the same responsibilities. Um, but we are, uh, doing it with a, um, with a smaller population and, and a, um, somewhat shrinking tax base in terms of real estate values. And, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm not putting this out there as an example of, of why we shouldn't cut personnel, but simply saying that in some ways there, there really isn't a way that we can address, um, the entire city with 14 fewer personnel than what we currently have. And, and if we could, believe me, I think we would have cut them already. Um, and, and so the, the task that falls to us as a, as a government, and it's one that I feel is that we have not been, um, stepping up to over the last, uh, decade perhaps, at bare minimum, is, is to confront how we bring new revenue to the city, how we sustainably make cuts to personnel, how we, um, how we think outside the box, so to speak, to combine responsibilities such that, such that we meet, um, both the demands of our, um, tax revenue and our citizens' needs. Um, and, uh, and a, a small portion of that responsibility accrues to, to all of us perhaps, but there has been, uh, very little planning on anyone's part. And, um, and it becomes transparently obvious when we're looking at a budget. Right now, we've, we've, we've had a really good year. Man, we got, um, what was it better than a million dollars back in our, um, for, on our healthcare costs? Um, we are, th- this budget is the product of an exceptionally good year, um, with an exceptional amount of money floating around that we weren't expecting. And, um, and we are going to be really in the hole next year when the piper comes, Colin. And, uh, and so we all look like doomsday prophets up here saying, hey, all the numbers worked out, and yet there's not going to be any money. But, um, but we, at some point, need to plan more than just that, that, that small amount. So, so while Mr. Henderson, I would, I would disagree with you that, that, the, I, I think a balanced budget is always and absolutely the goal. Um, but I do think that, uh, that we need to bear in mind that, that as a third-class city, we are offering services and we are providing, um, a certain quality of experience. And, and what we need to be trying to do is, is make the, um, make our city pay for itself in a number of different ways, not just in terms of cuts to existing services and to existing personnel. personnel, but in terms of expanded population and expanded appeal. And, and as I've said before a million times, and as I hope perhaps in the next year we do, we, we need to be examining that. We, we have very explicitly increased staffing despite some of our budgetary concerns in two areas in the city, one of which is planning and one of which is IT, because those are two areas that can return a lot to us for the money that we're putting into them. And, and theoretically, with the help of proper planning in our community and proper outreach, especially via social media and other things that our IT director can help us with, we can put ourselves in a better position than we have been. But I think we need to be wary of, while I, while I support perhaps trimming our, trimming ourselves a little bit, I, we need to be wary of trimming too hard, too fast, because I, I don't think that we can take care of our city with the sort of cuts that we're talking about needing to meet our budget. And, that's it. I'm off for now. Jonathan, Bonnie?
You both. I'm, I'm, but I'll go ahead and go another round here before I do.
Another round.
One of the things that we have to be thankful for is, between the police department and the fire department, they both have come up with ways to try and, and save money. The police department has come up with fantastic ways with the flex time, so it's saved a lot of overtime, so they are working very hard in order to save money in that department. Same thing with the fire department. They're coming up with grants and, and so many different other ways to save money. We have our engineer who's trying to go after funding. Everybody in the city, every, every department is working really hard to try and do this, and that's why it's so difficult. You don't know where to go, because you have, your department heads working so hard to save, and it's, it's just not enough. That's the problem. It's not enough. But I think Ms. Mealy said, hit it on the head, we have a shrinking population, and the shrinking population is, the services are the same. And if you're, you're still, you know, if you look back in the history, one of the things that I found interesting, if you look at streets and parks, many years ago, when they would do snow removal on the streets, alleys were never touched. All of a sudden, one alley was done, and before you know it, every alley in the city has to be plowed. What does that do? That's extra expense. So, that, those are, those are the kind of things that have happened out of courtesy to our citizens, but the courtesy to our citizens now costs extra money. And there are other things that we've done probably, that because we want to make the quality of life more comfortable for our citizens, it's also costing money. And sometimes these, these services, we're going to have to take a second look at, and that's, that's the way we have to look at.
And sometimes I feel like a broken record, and, and I'm not speaking, I, I'm not accusing my colleagues of being broken records, but together, we're broken records, because, I mean, we've said all of these things before. And we've done things at times to try to make a dent in, in, in it, in little ways. And I, I think I'm going to put my feet and our feet to the fire by making some proposals. I don't expect they'll all pass.
Speaking of services.
Exactly.
Is everything okay?
I don't like much of any of the proposals I'm going to make. I don't even know if I'm going to vote for all the proposals I'm making, because I dislike them so much. But I think we got to put our feet to the fire and see where it goes. The first one I want to make, though, yep, Mr. Allison.
I didn't get to say anything.
Oh, I'm sorry. My bad. I didn't, yeah, go ahead.
I wanted to hear everybody out.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to add some more context to it, the, the situation we're in as a third-class city is unique in the county. We're the urban center, and we have responsibilities and requirements of a third-class city that, that compound everything we're talking about tonight. So, that's important to, to know and understand. We can't say, well, we'll have volunteer firemen, and we will rely on the state police and cut taxes for you this year. But being the center of the county and the urban center, we bear, it's not proportional. We're the center for services that are not taxed, but that all the county is able to take advantage of. All the citizens of the county can take advantages of all the social services that are centered here, because we, we are the urban center, we're the county seat, and this, it's just natural that's where they're going to be, but we don't receive any monetary compensation for being that and for having those services. And those services, many of them are nonprofits that are non-taxable. We have a high percentage of property in the city that normally would be taxed, and if we were able to tax it, would add to that tax base that we so desperately need. We've lost a lot of housing stock, which has reduced that. So, those kind of things compound to make our situation. These things didn't happen overnight, but they did happen, and we need to recognize where we're at. It's vastly different, as Councilwoman Katz has said, to what it was thirty, forty, fifty years ago. The situations were reversed, but life is much more complicated now. So, it costs us more here. It costs more to live in Williamsport. There's, there's more services that we, we provide, but there's fewer that are shouldering that. We have a much higher percentage of rental properties here than throughout elsewhere in the county. Those things affect us as well. The other thing I want to address that we've talked about is, is the money. I look at it this way. Yes, we, we should have increased taxes a quarter mil for the last eight, ten, twelve Had that been done, and let me say this too, we've asked, and other councils have asked the administration, and I'm not talking about the administration as far as our finance people here, they do what they're told. And I'm just going to state facts. This is not meant as an attack, but it is a fact. The mayor's been asked to look at a several-year plan, and this is way back, chart where we're going, what we could do, and it's his preference not to do that. So be it. We're at the, the place now where we're going to be forced to look at that. We should, should have raised taxes. We should have had budgets that even though they looked good, put a little bit aside each year, knowing that you're going to have expenses, you're going to have capital improvements that need to be done to the, the property that we own, and, and to put that aside. But the administration, and the one who approves the budget that the administration gives us is the mayor, that, that wasn't his philosophy. He chose not to do that. I'm not saying that is an attack, I'm just stating a fact, but we as council saw the need, and we raised taxes over the past few years. I don't have, I didn't know we were going to have this discussion tonight in time to do, to put the numbers together. I think this is low, but I'm going to, let, let's just take for a round figure three mils, and I know we've raised it at least that, over a period of years, but that means it, it compounds. But three mils is worth roughly two-point-six-something million dollars. Over a period of years, that's added every year. So, the tax increases that this council has passed, but the mayor has never signed or taken partnership with, have added millions of dollars to the city budget over the period of the last few years. Is that an accurate statement, Mr. Nichols? If that wasn't needed, then where's the money? We don't have a pile of money sitting around. It was spent because we anticipated expenses. We anticipated that budgets we were presented were not responsible. We anticipated things that were coming up that were going to have to be met. We anticipated some of these trends that Dr. Williamson laid out so well and researched before this meeting. So, we added millions, yet we've always been painted as the heavy. We're the ones raising taxes. I won't do that anymore. I think it needs to be a joint cooperative venture between the top administrator and the council. I don't think it's appropriate anymore to do that. I, and let me say this, everything my fellow council people have, have said tonight is, is a hundred percent accurate, dead-on. We need to anticipate the future, but for this year, and at this time, I'm not willing to increase it an eighth of a mil. The mayor presented a no-tax-increase budget. I'm prepared to let that go forward, but I think this coming year, we should have a time of planning, a time of preparation, a time of looking at every line item as we go through the year. What can we do during the year? What kind of plan do we have to have going forward for five years? Those things need to be done. If we're going to look at personnel, we need to take a look at it through 2018, I believe. But I'm not going to approve us doing it one more time after we've already added millions of dollars to the budget, but have never had a partnership with the mayor's office in doing that. And I, to me, that's essential if the city's going to move forward and be successful. So, that's where I'm at tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. I have utmost respect for, for that position and, and for Mr. Allison in, in every possible And we all have to make our individual decisions, and that, that weighs on my own decisions. I, I, I don't know how I necessarily plan to vote. I, I have some ideas on proposals, but, you know, we can take them in turn, but before I get there, keep talking, Ms. Mealy.
I just wanted to say that I, that I too absolutely agree with Randy. While I'm occasionally reluctant to criticize, I am about as sick as, as I can get of cleaning up after the mayor's excesses and providing the funding for the excesses to continue another year, or perhaps simply the, the standard budget. And, and, and I am particularly sick of getting thrown under the bus for it, year after year, as we, as we, as we do the dirty, as, as we more or less do the, do the true work of running a city and, and meeting our financial needs, and then we get slammed for it time and again. That said, I also, my, my greatest fear is that we get to the end of next year, and we, and we need to increase taxes, and we need to increase them dramatically, and I, I also don't feel like I can do that to our citizens. And so, while it pains me, and, and frankly infuriates me to, to have to once again do the hard work of actually managing a city and trying to make it meet its, meet its budgetary needs with no cooperation whatsoever, and in fact, actual sort of, you know, with, with the mayor fighting it every step of the way instead, I will support a tax increase if, if council sees fit, simply because I think that, that, that somebody, several of us clearly in the city have, have to be adults about meeting our own budgetary needs, and, and if it's not going to come from our chief executive, then unfortunately, it needs to come from all of us. So, I, I, I very much respect your stance, Mr. Allison, and, and hey, maybe I'm going to wind up arguing with you by the end of the meeting. But, but for right now, I, I would support an increase.
Mr. Henderson.
We've been talking about, you know, this horrible idea of, of a very large tax increase. Again, I, I want to look at the, the opposite side of the spectrum. Had, had we been planning and maintaining and looking at what we can afford in terms of personnel over the past ten years, then maybe we wouldn't find ourselves in this situation. This is, this is a lack of, of planning as far as personnel, as far as our spending. And so, it's not all just a lack of planning on the revenue side, it's a lack of planning on the spending side, and, and that's why it's so baffling to me that we're so far over budget. I, I know our, our population is decreasing, but I don't think this was a surprise. I think we knew this was happening, didn't we? But we didn't plan for it. We did not plan for it. And so, when, when we talk about raising taxes, I, I know that may very well be a necessary component, but I have no intentions on, on voting to raise taxes unless there are some cuts to the budget. I think it's irresponsible to raise taxes and not do some serious painful trimming of our, of our government. That's my thought.
And, and so, the feet-to-the-fire thing. And, and the, so I'm going to make four motions, I think. We'll see where it goes. Maybe it'll be more, maybe it'll be less. The first one, I think, is a motion that I, I think, you know, if they're all painful, I think one part of the painful piece is one that we can take leadership on, we as elected officials. And, and I wish I had thought about this one far enough ahead of time to really explore it in full depth and, and had the plan in place. I don't have the plan in place, but I have a goal in mind on how to, where I want to get with the plan. And, and it's something that we're, we ought to take leadership on anyway, because we're asking some of our employees that are part of unions to participate in, in change, and we ought to be willing to accept change. Now, even if we pass what my motion will be, not everybody will necessarily get affected of it, even after we have a plan in place, because some of us are legally protected to have the current plan instead of a change plan, and I'm, I'm talking about healthcare. Healthcare is a significant component of, of the overall budget. I didn't separate out that measure, but we know that eighty percent of the total budget is, is salaries and benefits, and, and we know there's not a lot we can do year in and year out through the budget process to affect most of that healthcare cost, because many people have that by right as part of their union contract. But we're, I mean, I know the administration's negotiated in the past and intends to negotiate in the future on issues related to healthcare, because healthcare costs, we got lucky this year, but we won't always. Healthcare costs in this country are going up faster than, than we as a nation can afford, and Washington refuses to grow up either party and get real about a solution. So, we have no control over that. But what we can do is share in the pain. I know most employers have asked their employee, outside government, have asked their employees... I know most employers have asked their employee, outside government, have asked their employees to share in the pain, and they're both feeling the pain in terms of rising health care costs. The city has avoided that for a long time. And I'm thankful for that, honestly, both for the benefit of our fantastic employees that we have that work for the city and for my colleagues and myself. It's helped financially, real families. That said, the pain continues to grow, and I think it's time that we continue to ask our employees to share in the pain, and we should take leadership in that. So I don't have the plan, but I think that if we work hard together with the finance department and the human resources department, that we can come up with a plan that reasonably finds $25,000 in savings in the coming year that would come from a reduction in health care premium expenses being paid for by elected officials who would get to voluntarily or not voluntarily participate. It's their right to not change their plan, but I'd ask, I will participate in that sharing in premium costs if this passes, and our non-union employees. Now, I don't have a specific line item because it crosses multiple pages, and so I'll ask the solicitor, can I make a motion that reduces health care premium expenses by $25,000 across the pages covered by the elected officials and non-union employees proportionately? So that's my motion. I'll be happy to explain it more, but let's not waste your times if I don't have a second. The reason I'm making it first is because I'm trying to demonstrate leadership on an issue that will affect me.
Second.
A second, bud.
I hear a motion and a second. Mr. Nichols.
One thing we're going to be bringing forward is that we did come to an agreement with the Public Services, Streets and Parks Department on a new contract which includes a provision for current employees to provide for a co-pay on their insurance premiums. I think this model that we came up with for that department, and I certainly appreciate them working with us to establish this, is one that the administration, and I can't speak definitely for the mayor, but it's one that we wanted to bring forward after the first of the year as a model for all unions as well as that will employ. So I think we have that model in place that you're looking for.
Great.
And I certainly would support your motion as a friendly motion in terms of the administration.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Other comments or questions? Mr. Noviello.
I don't necessarily have a problem with the motion as it is, but I think it's going to affect a lot of people. They're right at this particular point in our judgment of this issue, aren't getting a chance to voice themselves here.
Uh huh.
I think that's an important part of this sort of discussion. I've said a number of times, even tax increases can go down easier to people if they feel that they've had a role to play in it and some input. And I think if we're going to cut benefits here to any of our employees, no matter who they are, we ought to at least get some, give them the courtesy of some input before that is finalized. That's probably my biggest concern about that motion as it stands.
Understood, and don't disagree. Ms. Mealy.
My understanding of the nature of the motion was more or less to attempt to force our hands on having the discussions, correct?
Uh huh.
That is to say, not by any means to determine, obviously, we can't determine here in the meeting. All we can say is the number's going to be this versus that. We can't determine what the nature of possible participation by anyone, elected officials or non-union employees, looks like in their own health care premiums. But I think what we can do is signal that it is something that we are going to make an absolute priority to determine within the next couple of months so that we can look at savings and also, of course, follow up on other bargaining units in the city who may be willing to agree to some of the same changes, so.
I'm amenable to that if the wording is done in such a fashion.
And my intent is, you know, of course, I can't solve that. I knew Bill, Mr. Nichols was, you know, had been working on a plan that he was proposing to others. I don't exactly know what those savings might yield if the population of people that I just addressed, elected officials and non-union employees, were to participate in that plan. And so this aspirational number, it might actually yield more savings. But if it's less, we can always transfer money back in.
But I think that's consistent with what the administration's trying to do and has made some exceptional steps with the cooperation of ASME and some discussions internally about what, how do we do this? Because we obviously provide a tremendous benefit as it relates to health care. As you said, we were sort of lucky this year. We've done a lot of things to establish savings for health care, but I think that's the next step, and the administration's been working hard on that. And so I think it's timely that we partner in that effort going into next year.
And I'm assuming that you'll present that to all of the employees, non-union, I mean, when the negotiation's up for union, but non-union elected officials, and get their feedback before the plan is finalized, which then, at least in part, addresses Mr. Noviello's concern. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
President City Council would have to pay 90% of their health care, then it'll go step down. No, I'm only kidding.
How does that relate to our income currently?
So it's a progressive, so given that you make quite a bit more, it would be like 99%?
Yeah, I guess, something like that.
All right. And I think it's important that we see a plan, have the opportunity to give feedback to that plan, and that it makes sense so that it's the least difficult plan to implement from an individual family's perspective. So I think that's a really good point.
And we'll present that plan. I think we'll roll that out.
Thank you. Other comments or questions on the motion? Hearing now Mrs. Frank on the motion to reduce the various health care premium line items for elected officials and non-union employees by a total of $25,000.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the motion carries, and I thank my colleagues for their shared leadership on that issue. They don't get easier, the motions, and I'm loathe to make the next couple. You know, we've spent a lot of time talking about a tax increase. We spend less time talking about the matching side of that. I think I joined Mr. Henderson in saying that I can't support a tax increase unless I also see that we're trying to find ways to expend money, expend less money. The problem with that is all the fat's gone, 80% of the budget is personnel. That means people, real people. Now, in some cases, that can be, these kinds of issues can be dealt with through attrition instead of an individual losing their job. That kind of decision, that kind of planning is outside the hands of council. That kind of decision, that kind of planning falls to the administration and to the various department heads to come up with a way to make the budget work. There are some departments that have already been cut to the bone, and either we legally can't cut them anymore, or they've already taken a hit in the last year or two. It just, it can't happen. So you look through the budget and you go, where is it? Where is their room? Honestly, there's only a couple departments where it even makes sense to propose it. I don't even, can you tell I'm avoiding even making the proposal? I haven't decided what, how I'm going to vote based on the proposals that I, I think it's the only responsible thing to do, to at least talk about. And the only way to talk about them is to make the proposal, see if there's a second, and then talk. And so please don't interpret the next couple proposals as they're not at all, no one should consider them punitive. No one should consider them a slap against the face of the leadership of any department, a slap against the face of the staff of any department. Nobody should consider it as somebody coming from somebody who doesn't care about the mission and the quality of work that's done in each department. This is painful for me, but I think it's the responsible thing to do to at least talk about any mini-miney-mo, I'm going to make two different ones for two different departments. And the first one, I'm going to make a motion to reduce the salary and benefits line items for the codes department by a number to be determined, or can I get feedback on a number that makes sense? I can throw out a number that would result in more or less the salary and benefits of one individual. I've estimated it to be about $50,000, $55,000.
Well, obviously, it would be a relationship to seniority in terms of
Sure.
what you're referring to. So that, depending on the benefits that that individual receives, I'm not sure.
We're waiting on a little calculator work here.
Fifty would be a better number.
Let's call it 53, just to split the difference. My motion is to reduce the salary and related benefits line items for the codes department budget by $53,000. I don't want it, thank you, hearing a second. It's not a motion I'm happy to make. It's not an effect that I'm happy to make. If there's any consolation, I can say that, you know, a few years ago, under the council's leadership, we increased the staffing. It was our desire to do that. It was also our desire to increase the salaries in codes. But, you know, yet we're faced with less development, less activity happening in the codes department, and maybe it hasn't had the intended effect at as dramatically as we had hoped for, and so maybe there's some room to split the difference between where we were prior to that move that we had to expand codes and where we would end up be if this passes. But here's what I'm looking at. At $53,000 over two years, that's $106,000. That's $106,000 out of a $1.7 million problem.
That's 6%.
Thank you. I was trying to do the math. Couldn't get there. 6% of the problem.
I might even be wrong about that.
Then you'd be, keep in mind, unemployment will offset that considerably.
In the first bit of time, yes.
We're selling, we're a reimbursable plan, so it comes directly out of our budget.
Okay. It's net savings, but it is not a considerable net savings.
It's not that, you know, reduces considerably because of, we're a reimbursable plan.
Right.
Not insured plan, so.
Fair enough.
There are considerable costs related to unemployment.
Sure. And it may be possible, I don't know, it may be possible for, based on information that we have, that, you know, attrition allows for that to be dealt with. That would be my hope.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
What is the percentage rate that the city is in charge for unemployment? Do you know?
Hmm?
Pardon me?
Dollar for dollar.
Dollar for dollar, yeah.
It's dollar for dollar, okay. Because businesses, then it's different for businesses.
At 100% salary?
What?
At what percentage of salary?
Whatever the maximum benefits are suspended.
Well, that's the question. I think that's our question.
Yes.
But unfortunately, whatever they get, the dollar the city pays.
Sure, but they don't get their full salary, is it?
They don't get their full salary, but.
But there's a percentage rate of what, isn't there?
Percentage of their salary.
But the city is also charged a percentage. The higher unemployment you have in a company, the higher your percentage rate is what you're charged back, not with government?
We're not in that type of, we're not in insurance plan.
Yeah, it's, we pay whatever it is.
Okay, because I'm talking business.
If you lay off someone and the state pays that person $500 a week for 26 weeks, you pay them back. Generally, if you're going to lay off somebody when the reimbursement's land, you're looking, you almost have to lay off two people to break even. If you're looking for savings.
All right, Jonathan, 4%.
You're looking at laying off two people, not one person.
So one person is really going to cost us money.
To get one per person's worth of savings.
You get savings.
But that doesn't, that's only on salary, doesn't include a benefit savings.
Correct.
Right. So you're saving health care and FICA and.
Depends on what they are costing. Generally, that's, years, 20 years ago, when we were laying off, if we in the city did that, we had to lay off four weeks. That's what I was told about the FICA department. You had to really lay off one more person than what you were to get the net savings.
Of one person?
Yes.
But you have to start somewhere, and I'm not prepared to lay off two people. So my motion is one, in this department. Ms. Mealy.
It sounds like what I'm hearing is that a department that's likely to have some attrition might be a wiser place if we're going to go cutting.
Sure.
And my understanding would be that the codes department perhaps doesn't have any, my understanding from the discussion in general would be that perhaps there isn't likely to be any attrition in the codes department anytime this year. I'm not sure. I don't honestly know all that much about staffing, but I would agree with you, Dr. Worf, at least with your observations, that we did increase the size of the codes department, hoping to allow them to better deal with an increase in development and also problem properties and such like in the city, and that perhaps we haven't had quite as much development as anticipated, and also that we haven't perhaps dealt with problem properties quite as much as we might have anticipated either. That said, and given a possible savings scenario of pretty much nil for this year, I may be disinclined to back this particular motion, but would be inclined perhaps to revisit it next year.
When we won't see any savings.
I know, when we won't see the savings until the year after. I understand that, but I would be interested in having a look at the attrition situation in the codes department perhaps, as well as, that is to say, if anyone will, we'll be leaving the codes department of their own free will at some point soon to sort of further, further look at this question.
Ms. Allison.
Just as I'm not prepared to vote in favor of any tax increase, I'm not in favor of any staff decisions this evening, although I understand, it's a valid point that you The health care was different, and I think that was a needed step in that direction. But I'm just not prepared tonight to make any staff decisions. Personally, I'd rather we look at that in the early, in the coming year, and do some research and some talking and see what, there's too many unanswered questions, and for myself, there's things I want to know, and we're asking some of that tonight. And I don't feel confident that I can support any of that, given that we could be facing dire circumstances, and the more money we save, the earlier, the better. I need information on staffing that we can't get tonight.
Fair enough. Ms. Henderson, did I see a hint?
I understand Mr. Allison's perspective. With a decision like this, what we are attempting to do is manage and administrate when we don't have the knowledge to do it. You know, it's hard to make decisions like that, and I understand that because we're talking about real people, real individuals, and real departments with real needs that we're not necessarily privy to or aware of at this point. And so I, you know, concur. And, and so I, I, you know, concur. On the flip side, if, if we don't make decisions to cut, then, then there are no guidelines within which the administration has to work to make the necessary cuts that I feel we need to make. And so I, I, I agree, I understand, I would much prefer to work together with the administration as a team to make the appropriate cuts. I don't want to just do something rashly. And I think we need that. I think we need time to make the right decisions on that, and I would agree, I would agree. It's difficult. I don't know. I'll listen to some other
Are there other comments or questions? Ms. Novia?
On the face of it, again, I can appreciate the motion, I understand the logic of it. Certainly understand that there's a rationale behind it that's rational. But this decision at this point in time, at least at this juncture, to me is a little bit ahead of itself. I'd like to also do a little bit more research on the staffing issues particularly. And again, as been mentioned several times here now, we're actually, I think, in a sense, making a plea here to the administration for some more involvement with each other and a better way of vetting some of these circumstances out and getting to more thought-out decisions before we, you know, kind of jump the gun. This type of a decision isn't solely an economic decision. This, again, was already quickly mentioned, this is about someone's life. And it's not only that life, but it's the life of the family members as well, so we're looking at this, you know, in that fashion as well. And, you know, unemployment for twenty-six weeks is okay, but you're not gonna live on unemployment for twenty-six weeks very well. So I would like to at least make an attempt to sit with the administration, certainly any department head whose department would be affected by a decision like this, and get a little bit more feedback, a little bit more information before we come to a final conclusion. I think we have a little bit of breathing room, we might be able to get that accomplished in a reasonably short period of time, should we get the kind of contribution from the administration that we're, that we're hoping for. I think that's possible. I think it's, it's a, it's a reality that we can make happen for ourselves here. Instead of just hoping that things go well as we go down the line here, so. Again, I have a respect for the motion, maybe not at this particular juncture, and I'll add in that thought that I think we need to be a bit more responsible for the vetting of what we're gonna decide to do here. Thank you, Mr. Allison.
If I may, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It's difficult for the administration to react to what you're suggesting
Sure.
without understanding the context of all your motions. Maybe you could, I know you have four, but for, for, especially for myself, for me to react to what you're, you're suggesting, is it possible to hear
Yeah, no, I
the rest of what you're suggesting, so.
If members of council who are kind of next will defer, I can give that framework. And I could make more, but, you know, I, I think maybe all of them will ultimately be symbolic of the difficult choices, you know. Like I said, I didn't even commit to voting for them. But it is the kind of tough choices that I think we need to make. Here's my next one, and I wanna kind of lead it in by it's hard with the table with people's backs too, so I'm gonna ask Chief Young to make eye contact with me for a second and express to you personally, and more generally to your entire department, how much I've respected I respect, not respected, I currently respect everything that has gotten better, stronger, more efficient, more effective in, in your tenure, and so therefore, you know, over the last months or so. It, it, it's remarkable what has happened in the police department and the direction, the positive directions. So there is nothing about what my next motion would be that is, should be interpreted as being against what's happening or soft on crime. It is purely a budgetary kind of idea, and by the way, I think if I'm reading my colleagues right, I expect it to fail. But I think we need to make the point that these are the kinds of things that we're gonna have to talk about. We'll have no choice at some point. And, and the reason that you would be next is three point eight million dollar salary plus benefits, eight point eight one seven million dollars is simply the biggest part of the budget. I mean, that, that's the only reason, and so I just wanted to look at you eye to eye and say it's for no other reason. Then, you know, my next motion will be to reduce salary and benefits, and I don't expect it to pass by the equivalent of one officer in that amount. So that would be my next one. If, if there's a second, fine, if there's not, fine. But that's the kind of tough choices. It's, it's, you know, a third of the budget. There's not many places to go in the budget, simply not. I mean, there, some places, if you make any cuts, you're basically eliminating a department. Other places, if you make any cuts, you're basically gonna end up in court. So, you know, I respect you, and I wanted to say that eye to eye. Sure. The final one, and one that is kind of where we spent a lot of time talking about is about the tax increase idea, right? In the past, when we've seen irresponsible budgeting, we've come back, as Mr. Allison said, and said, all right, well, we're gonna provide the resources the city needs to get us through a year or two more. And your calculation, at least best you could come up with on the fly, was about three mils over the last eight or ten years. And that's bringing in, as Mr. Nichols confirmed, millions of dollars over that time period, and by the way, there's no millions of dollars left. The mayor and the administration ensured that those dollars were spent. And I get Mr. Allison's reluctance to do it yet again. I feel, I feel that strongly. But that said, if we don't do some now, then next year's harder, and looking at a two mil number in my calculations, it may have flaws in it, but nobody can point to clear flaws. You know, we're gonna dig ourselves deep in a hole. And so can't take all of that all at once, so how about a quarter mil? The, the idea of slow, manageable, responsible changes that Mr. Nichols has taught many of us, all of us. But my version of what Mr. Allison is saying is we gotta be responsible both sides of the equation this time. And so my motion, as the fourth motion, was gonna be, you know, we've taken a leadership role to take a bite that will affect elected officials. We, we take a bite out of trying to reduce costs, where the one plate, you know, places where costs are heavily weighted, and that would be in staffing, there's a whole lot of reasons to say no to that. And I get it, and I agree with him. The third bite, and the only one, and I, one I won't vote for unless we take a stab at plate number two and number, and/or number three, is a tax increase. And so, you know, if no, motion number two and number three fail, and I expect they will, then I'm with Mr. Allison. No tax increase, great, I'm, I'm happy. I don't have to pay a tax increase. I don't have to tell other people they have to pay a tax increase next year. And I will attempt again to work with the mayor to find solutions in a more reasoned, thought-through, good, strong communications over the course of an entire year on a good plan to accomplish that. But ultimately, it's his problem at that point, if he doesn't respond to those outreaches. So two, three, and four, codes, police, tax, in that order. Mr. Nichols?
A comment I think I was asked, I think it was last year before, to do a spreadsheet on what, if there was a quarter of a mil over ten years, what that would look like. Obviously, there's a compounding effect there, but essentially, you tax, the tax rate would be twenty percent less, and you'd have two million dollars more cash. I mean, that's just the simple
Sure.
compounding effect. The problem is understanding that that small tax increase unfortunately needs to happen because there's no growth in our tax base. It's as simple as that, and, but everything else goes up.
Sure.
So it's putting a little bit in the savings account every year, so you have a smoothing effect in terms of that, and, but how do you sell that to the taxpayer? I understand that, that's, and the philosophy is you only do tax increases when it's absolutely necessary, or you put some in the savings account every year, so it's smoothed out and it's more tolerable and, and less in terms of what the tax rate is in a given year, so. That's what your philosophy is on, on that, that issue.
You've taught me well, Mr. Nichols.
I, I, I don't want to suggest which one is the best way, that's not my role, but I think what I'm hearing from you is you want the administration to react to the 2019 budget earlier than later, and that you're looking at reductions in personnel, and, you know, maybe as part of the budget ordinance that you say that you're asking, asking administration to come back with a personnel plan that reduces personnel by two, you know, sometime during the year. I mean, I don't know if that's appropriate.
And that's not the specific request I'm making. What I'm making is an engagement between, and I think, hearing counsel, an engagement with counsel on how to develop a responsible budgeting plan that can be sustainable over time.
But in terms of, but, but in terms of your suggesting, in terms of public safety, you have a public safety committee that should, should be engaged with the administration on that issue. You have a public works committee, I think it should be engaged in looking at the codes department as complement, how effective they are. You know, whether they are earning their way, so to speak, you know, given, you know, fees are associated with that, you know, maybe fees need to be looked at, you know. You're supposed to have fees that correspond to the cost of the codes department. I mean, there's really a broader issue here that needs to be looked at, and not just a budget time.
Right. How do we spend less and raise more so that we have a sustainable plan, so that we don't mortgage the future by making the politically expedient decisions today?
Now, we need to do things like the refinancing, the Benicon model, the I mean, there's things we've come up
Absolutely.
with council's partnership and to save money to get us by, especially next year. But I, I think somehow, I think the administration understands what you're trying to say without having to really do that right now, as I've always argued. It's a everyday situation, and just because you pass a budget doesn't mean you don't do anything until the next budget's set, so.
But it's the one, it's the one time of year where we get listened to
Right, I understand.
more clearly.
I understand that, right, I, well.
I think Ms. Mealy was next from earlier, unless she'd like to defer until I wanna give her the first option.
Yeah, so she's more covered in chocolate than currently. No, actually, I, I'm willing to defer to someone else right now.
Mrs. Catt?
Last week, we discussed how we would get into the meat of all the situations with all the departments, and this is one thing that we really don't do. We don't get into the meat. We just get into passing resolutions of what, what's gonna happen immediately. And that's one of the things, as you said, we should sit down and we should go with the departments and find out how, what can be done, how the operations are done. I mean, what's very frustrating tonight is this, this is the mayor's proposed budget. He's not even here tonight to even discuss anything, which I find very disturbing, I really do. You're talking administration. The administration really is finance. The mayor is not here. And, you know, we're trying to come up with plans to run this city more efficiently. So I think we do have to take more control over the departments, so, because obviously, he hasn't. And, and that's what's so frustrating with this. And I think every, every department, every committee should say, we want to sit down with every department and get down to the meat and figure out how we can do things better, what we can cut, what isn't necessary, and I think that's where we should go, go to. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice.
And I think the administration's prepared to do that, given the, you know.
You are. I want to know what that man is going to help do. I mean, I'm very frustrated with this. I really am, and I can understand what Randy's saying. But for us to sit up here, and we're trying to figure out how to save taxpayers' money, how to run the city more efficiently, and we don't have the man sitting there. I'm sorry.
Perfectly fine, Mrs. Catt. Mr. Allison?
I wanted to say something about the codes, but it's obvious that the word that keeps coming up is administration, it's administrating. It's really not our purview totally, but we found ourselves having to get involved in that area, or try to at least understand it better so we could deal with certain issues. Kind of lost in discussion about codes at times. To my recollection, one of the reasons we increased the amount of codes officers was in response to the landlord-tenant ordinance, which yeah, it's not there anymore. It was, it was the, the big push. It was the answer to our problems with crime in the city and negligent landlords. A lot of administrative time behind the scenes was spent on it. We were assured that the ordinance was constitutional, it had been proven. Wilkes-Barre did it, Berwick did it. We need to go this route, it's already been tested. Lo and behold, we get sued by a landlord, and fortunately, we found out that Wilkes-Barre was already settling a major lawsuit. The, the ordinances were found by the court to be unconstitutional. Our saving grace is that we weren't first up to bat. Wilkes-Barre took the big hit financially on that. We settled for less, but it did cost us money. It was, it was a misstep. It was an administrative misstep. We added codes because they were to be a component working in tandem with the police department to identify blighted properties that many times turn out to be the places where there are illegal activities going on, or if we found a place that was conducting illegal activity, but had a code violation, codes officers can ask to go in. And that was a model that was working other places, so we, when we I distinctly remember we spent a few hours that night, the landlord-tenant ordinance was passed, rewriting parts of the ordinance so that it would make sense, and moving things around. And that was just structurally, and some of it was content. It, it didn't really deal with the intent of the ordinance, because that was far beyond what we were trying to do, but we were trying to make it at least cohesive and logical the way it was laid out. And, and in that, we, we saw that codes, part of the plan was to use codes heavily in, in that outreach, and, and in that the way that was gonna affect crime detection and prevention in the city, so we responded to that. We said, okay, if this is what you're gonna do, we'll add more codes officers, 'cause we didn't, it didn't look like we had enough to, to get done what needed to be done. And now, we don't have an ordinance anymore. It was unconstitutional. We've waited for the administration to revise it, rewrite it, do whatever it might take to have one that's constitutional, and the crickets keep chirping, so. You know, that, that's another reason, I think, why we're, we're looking at, at the staffing. We, we increased staff to deal with that, and now we, we haven't had it for a while, and we've been wondering what we're gonna do with that. I think that's pertinent to the, to the whole
Absolutely.
thing with codes.
Absolutely. All right, thank you. Ms. Mealy?
Although, I, I think the best point for all of this is that there it is both more humane and more effective to discuss personnel. humane and more effective to discuss personnel and financial issues and fiscal issues here in the city at something other than a city council meeting where we're making, where we're making large-scale budgetary decisions. This is a completely, um, I, I, I still don't know whether I would support the motion, but I would say that this is a completely inappropriate conversation for us to be having tonight. There is, there is no reason that, that we shouldn't have had these discussions with the administration and arrived at these conclusions, frankly, months ago, if, if this was something that, that should have been on, that, that was going to be on the carpet. And, and the fact that we haven't speaks, once again, as Bonnie pointed out, to a distinct absence on the part of the chief executive when participating in discussions like these and having difficult talks about how to meet our financial obligations and also treat our employees fairly and deal with our, and, and, and deal fairly with our departments. And, uh, and so I would also apologize to the departments in the city that, that may feel as though they're somehow or another put under a microscope here tonight. It, it's, it's not appropriate. It is not our intention, but we have to have this discussion at some point, and we have not been afforded the opportunity to have this discussion elsewhere in a, in a practical and practical fashion. Uh, sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Mealy.
Yeah, I agree with that because certain department heads are not here, and, and we've had our budget work sessions where those discussions should have taken place, uh, but I, but I, I think you can still accomplish discussions with the administration after the first of the year on those longer-range issues because that's exactly what they are. They're not immediate, uh, I mean, they're concerns, but not immediate concerns that have to be dealt with tonight, I don't think. But, um, but I think you're making the point that we need to really engage in a discussion about long-range planning after the first of the year. And that last staff meeting with the mayor, we did talk about that, so I think we're, we're on the same page, but.
Thank you, Mr. Noviello.
Thank you, Mr. Niks.
I appreciate those comments. They're, they're spot on at this point in time. I would like to just, I think I'm almost obliged to remind some folks here that, uh, over the last several years, that, uh, that the chairman of the public works and public safety committees has asked repeatedly of the department heads to work up their preliminary budget before we got to this stage. As I understand it, they did so, but they were not allowed to report us, that information to us. So it really fell upon, you know, a deaf ear at that particular point in time. But we did make those overtures. We were after that numerous times. And the, the immediate response we got back was positive, but the ultimate response was we're not going to do this. And hence it's put us in, that in part, not solely, but that in part has put us where we are tonight. Thank you.
Other comments or questions on the motion to, on this motion? Mr. Gramps.
I was just going to say, procedurally, whether it's symbolic or not, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think your original motion was to reduce the salary line by 53,000, which if you account for the 26-week matching unemployment, you would be asking to cut two staffs unless you'd have a follow-up motion to have an additional expense to fund that since you're asking for 2018 to lower it by that. I believe that was your initial motion.
Yeah, the, the salary and benefits by 53,000, exactly how that gets executed is then, you know, ultimately, administration, if that requires attrition or layoffs in part of the year, or for that matter, I don't even know furloughs for, to help make up part of that piece. And of course, you know, there's always the discussion later on in terms of things like transfers, et cetera. But the effect could be more than one individual. We don't set the number of people employed. Even though it's listed in our budget book, I think you're right. Ultimately, how far do you stretch the dollars we authorized is up to the administration. And I think.
I'm sure after your discussion, your, your motion was a different than you imagined.
Yes, exactly. And, and, and we ended up with a $53,000 number. Are there more comments on that motion? Mr. Henderson. Thank you, Mr. Gramps, by the way.
I mentioned before, I have no desire to make rash decisions about personnel in this meeting, and I would concur with Ms. Mealy, uh, you know, that this is not the place to have those discussions. However, a statement needs to be made, and, and I'm hoping that, uh, that it will be made, that regardless of the, the vote on this proposal, that, that it will, it will resound because we need to do something. And this, cutting personnel is a long-term solution. It doesn't help us with this year's budget necessarily. It's a long-term solution, and, and that's what I'm looking at. You know, when my children are paying taxes here, will they be grateful that, that I looked ahead and made some, some changes now that would benefit them? Or would they be disappointed that, that when I was serving, I, I didn't have the fortitude to make the decisions that we should have? And so these are the considerations that I have to make, that we all have to make. It's difficult. It's hard. And, um, and I would add this, that I don't know the individuals in the, in the different departments. I don't know the, the, the personnel on a personal, you know, basis that way. And so any type of, of decision that I make or, or vote that I cast is not anything personal at all, but with, with a mind toward the future. We need to do something now. The sooner the better. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nichols.
Just one last comment. I think what you're, I mean, it's, um, when you're making decisions like this, I think you're looking at it in one dimension. I, I think this really needs to be looked at in a much more broader system approach in terms of performance-based budgeting, which I think a city needs to do more of. Um, you know, what are you trying to accomplish? Um, you know, what kind of results are you getting? Do we have enough personnel to accomplish what you want to do? Do we have, uh, you know, I mean, or have we accomplished what we need to do and so now we can downsize? I mean, that's what private industry does. They're always looking at everything in terms of performance-based, um, results from their employees. And we're looking at it just as, well, we need one less person because we need to save money. But are you losing money because of that? You know, you're not, you're not able to accomplish what you need to accomplish. Do, you know, the housing stock then becomes in, in, in more distress because we don't have enough codes people? I mean, these decisions need to be in a much more broader context, and, um, and I think the city needs now to look at, you know, what I try to do, and what I've always been trying to do is performance-based budgeting and not just, um, budgeting by the numbers.
Sure. And, and, Mr. Nichols, please know that my proposals here are trying to do that with the best available information I have.
I understand that.
And, and I also understand that there are many members of the city staff that would love the opportunity to participate in that kind of strategic planning and have not been afforded the, the authorization to do so. And so by no means do I disrespect, um, the staff and, and all it tries to do to accomplish that. And, and I hope you and none of the staff would, um, you know, we've said, you know, this is an inappropriate conversation. It's, it's one-off. It's, it's not part of a larger plan. Yeah, all that's true. I mean, I've tried to take all of the information I have available to figure out, not just the budget savings, but what makes sense, given limited information. But we haven't had the afford, we haven't been allowed to have both sides of that conversation the way it ought to have, where everybody's got the right idea together and puts their mind together to say, all right, what's the most effective setup that we can afford? And so, you know, after a decade of this, I feel left to at least put it on the table in this format, given that we, the guy's not here, hadn't led us to do it any other format. So, um, uh, on this motion, I'll vote for it, not because I want a codes officer, but because I want to make a point. I, if I'm counting, I think it'll fail, and I'm okay that it fails, but I think we'll have made the point, you know, if it gets one vote, two votes, three votes, whatever it is. So if there are no further comments on this particular motion? Uh, Mrs. Frank, please.
Ms. Mealy?
No.
Mr. Noviello?
No.
Mrs. Katz?
No.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
No.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the motion fails. Uh, and I'm fine with that. I think a point has been made, and, and, and here's one more reason why I'm going to make the motion on the police department. I don't want the codes department to feel singled out. So I make a motion to reduce, uh, the salary and benefits by, how about $75,000 for the police department?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Any further comments? My, my only addition is to say, again, I'm not happy making the motion much less happy to be one of, maybe one vote, maybe two votes that'll vote for it. It's the point that I'm trying to make. We can't keep doing this forever. It's going to fail, so the number. Um, uh, Ms. Mealy.
Um, and, and I would say that I wholeheartedly agree with, with the sentiment and also with the sentiment that we do need to look at cuts ASAP, not, not just next budget year, but begin talking about them at the very beginning of this year. On the other hand, I do not believe that this is the appropriate place for us to be making those fiscal decisions and, and that level of, of decision, that, that small, you know, individual level of decision for, for our departments. So I, 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 I won't be supporting the motion. I will agree with Dr. Williamson that we, that we need to be looking at this as soon as possible, and that if we can recognize those savings in this department or in another department within this upcoming budget year, that would be desirable. So, um, okay.
Um, other comments or questions? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank on the motion related to the police department.
Ms. Mealy?
No.
Mr. Noviello?
No.
Mrs. Katz? Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
No.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the motion fails. And again, I'm fine with that. And by the way, uh, you know, we could keep doing the exercise, right? We could go to every single department and make a similar motion to make a similar point, and I'm, you know, any of them, uh, would be appropriate. I picked those two because of the reasons stated, but it's not because I think either one of them is, is deserving of losing important, valuable, necessary resources. I, I just think it's important that we start right now dealing with our fundamental structural deficit. And so my last motion that I will make but vote against is a motion to increase taxes by one quarter mill. Is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a motion, a second. Uh, Mr. Nichols.
Should that be part of the next ordinance, or maybe I lost track on the tax rate?
Increase the line item in the budget that's related to property tax revenue in the equivalent of 218,000, uh, $498. I get, I understand from procedural.
I'm saying, the next, you're setting the tax rate on the next ordinance. Wouldn't that be more appropriate?
Sure, but let's finish this discussion. And so the, the line that it would change is on page, um, uh, page four, real estate current. The motion is to increase that line item by 218,498, which is one quarter mill. Uh, I heard a motion. Do you agree with how I phrase this, with your second, Ms. Katz? And so comments or questions on this? Ms. Mealy.
By the same token, I will actually be supporting this one because, as I said, I feel as though if it will be necessary for us to raise taxes next year, then we perhaps owe it to the taxpayers to lessen the blow somewhat by beginning that movement this year. As, as weird and as quirky and as illogical as that sounds, I think that it is actually kinder to begin that process this year than it is to, to, to wait until next. And I see some heads nodding, so I guess that some of us agree with that theory, but I will also understand that we're sick of carrying water for, for other people on, on a city level, and so we are of two minds about this.
Agreed. Mr. Noviello.
I think this is sort of like the idea of ripping off the bandage off a wound as quickly as possible so there's somehow rather less pain. I do think that this is the first step in a series of steps that's going to be necessary over the next several years. Those steps will be easier and lesser of a stride, if you will, if in fact we get some of that involvement with the administration and department heads and such. And I think Mr. Nichols' comments sort of lend themselves to that, and I appreciate that. But I do find myself able to support this quarter mill increase.
Mr. Henderson.
Um, I won't be supporting this because I, I, I don't feel we can ask taxpayers to cut their budgets if we're not willing to cut ours. And so I think we need to do it hand in hand. And so for that reason, I won't be supporting.
Mrs. Katz.
I think, I'm losing my voice here, but I think Ms. Mealy has said it perfectly. This is something that we need to do to prepare for the 2018 and 2019 budget, and it's not fair to increase so much next year than what we are this year. And I think a quarter mill in small increments, I think, is, is more beneficial to the taxpayers than trying to have a huge increase when we're really going to need it in 2018 and 2019. As Mr. Nichols has pointed out to us continuously, it's not going to get better, it's going to get worse. And I think, you know, I know what, what, what Mr. Henderson is saying is to cut the budget. We all do that in our own homes when you're trying to meet your, your, your bills that you have to pay every month. If you can't, you, you learn to cut costs somewheres in your, in your home. I think right now what we're saying, and I think we really have to be adamant about this, is we have to get into every department to sit down and rationally talk with them and find out where we can cut in those departments. As you, Mr. Henderson has said, we don't know everything of all these departments. We only are brought certain things to us. So therefore, I think if we intelligently do this next year, starting in January, and work its way through every department and ask them realistically, let's go by line by line and see what's going on in your department. What can you cut? What personnel can you cut? So, you know, and this way, maybe by 2018, we can reduce payroll. We can, can learn and, and find out how we can run this city more efficiently. I think it's up to us to do this at this point. And yes, I will vote for the increase because I just think it's, it's fairer to our taxpayers, okay, at this point.
Other comments or questions? I made the proposal, I said I was going to be voting against it. I'm going to stick to that, and the reason I'm sticking to it is, is to agree with Mr. Henderson in that I, I believe that to fix our structural budget deficit, structural budget deficit, not short-term, not balanced, structural budget deficit, we're going to need to have additional revenue, and we're going to have, uh, uh, have cuts. That said, for the, my colleagues who've said that they support it, I think that's the right solution. That is the solution. Manageable increases that meet, you know, what people can afford and, and meet the reasonable increases from year to year. But until we fix the structural deficit from the expenditure side as well, I go back to what Mr. Allison said. Tired of fixing it without fundamental changes that involve the engagement other people have been talking about between the administration and council that fix the problem for the long haul, not just to get us through to the next year. And, and, and at the same time, let me, let me compliment the departments, the department heads, the finance department for figuring out how to make it work this long.
Here, here.
Yes.
They bleed to figure it out from year to year, but they don't have the ability to fix the structural budget deficit. And only if we work together can we do that. So good job to them, but it's out of their hands. And so I'll be voting against my own proposal, against my better judgment. If there are no other comments or questions? If there are no other comments or questions? Ms. Frank on the motion to increase the property tax line item?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz? Mr. Henderson?
No.
Mr. Allison?
No.
Dr. Williamson?
No. And the motion, that motion also fails. I think I'm done. Are there other comments or questions on the budget as amended? And I'll remind you that the one amendment that did carry tonight was to reduce the healthcare premiums. Hearing no further comments on the, on the ordinance and final reading. Can we get a reminder? This is a, it's a four oh vote to pass on final reading, five oh if it's going to sustain a veto, correct? Or five, five votes in affirmative to sustain a veto? Two thirds of not, of seven? So that's five. So any further final comments? Hearing none, Ms. Frank on the ordinance as amended and final reading.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz? Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
No. The budget carries in final reading, five oh. Let me find my order, my agenda. And by the way, thank you, colleagues, Mr. Nichols, administration, everybody who participated in that, respectful.
Thank you for.
Productive.
Getting the conversation going.
Absolutely.
Thank you for leading the way.
Next item on the agenda is an ordinance and final reading, fixing the tax rate. Ms. Frank?
An ordinance of the City of Williamsport, County of Lightcoming, and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, fixing the tax rate for all city purposes for the year 2018.
Can I have a motion, a second, on this ordinance and final reading?
So move.
Second.
Hearing a motion, a second. Comments or questions? Hearing none, Ms. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz? Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Sure, yes. So the ordinance passes in final reading. Next item on the agenda is resolution authorizing a tax and revenue anticipation note. Can I have a motion, a second, to approve this?
So move.
Second.
Hearing a motion, a second. Mr. Nichols, how are you this evening?
I don't know what to say. Anyway. I just, I'm blank. I don't know what happened.
Is that the first time ever?
I think so.
Wow.
Anyway.
Mr. Nichols is dreaming of his post-budget Christmas cocktail out there somewhere in the city.
Something like a triple?
Yeah.
Or several?
Something. Anyway, this authorizes a tax and revenue anticipation note in the amount of $2 million and to accept a proposal from M T Bank to purchase the note. Again, this is to provide line of credit, to provide the necessary cash flow to get us over the hump, so to speak, until tax collections begin after sometime in March and April. All the information provided is the same as in past years, including an update of a certificate of taxes and revenues to be collected for 2018. And the interest rate actually is a little lower than last year, so that's a good thing. So we're asking for your approval of this resolution.
Thank you, and it's reviewed by Finance. Ms. Mealy?
Finance did review this and forward it to the full body of council with positive recommendation. Most of our discussions, Senator Corse, around the increase in the amount of the tax anticipation note for this year. However, as Mr. Nichols and Mr. Pavlok pointed out, there is some logic to viewing that as a sort of inflationary measure as well. The amount of our tax anticipation note has gone up and down over the years. And as we discussed, and I had not been aware of this, there was a period when we did not have a tax anticipation note, but that was because R V T had enough liquidity to float the city the money to get by, which apparently is still legal, much to our surprise. However, R V T also has no liquidity any longer, so they can't lend us enough money to get through the first couple of months of the year before our taxes come in. That said, of course, the key to not having to borrow money to get through the first several months of the year in terms of payroll and other expenses is to have a bottom line that is strong enough that the city can fund itself until we, until we receive our first tax payments in April and May, or the majority of our tax payments in April and May. And we have not done that for a long time. That doesn't mean that it isn't a laudable goal, and it is something that we should aim for as a community. The loan itself, the tax anticipation note, cost us very little money this year. I think it was $20,000 or perhaps slightly less, and it is generally less than that in interest. However, every little bit counts, and there's no particular reason why we should be paying to borrow money when we ought to simply have enough to get by. But all of that said, there's not much other option in the short term, as we've been discussing about any number of things this evening. So Finance forwarded to the full body of council with positive recommendation.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Mr. Henderson?
I talked about this last year, and here we are again. But just, just a thought or a question here. Last year, our surplus was 1.4 million. We borrowed 1.5 million. This year, our surplus is 2.3, and we're borrowing 2 million. And it just seems upside down to me. If we were able to make it last year borrowing 1.5 with a lower, you know, overhead there, how does this, how does this come together?
Well, if you look at the cash flows they put in there, we, if you look at the general government cost, $24 million approximately, $2 million a month. So if local taxes don't start coming in until March, you're talking about cash flow needed of $4 million or more. So the $2.5 million we have in surplus, obviously, would get us, that's one about a little over one month. But there's other revenues that we collect. So, you know, the line of credit, the tax anticipation note gives us about one month worth of cash flow is all. And we're able to, you know, cover the other two. So that's how we sort of gauge it is, you know, what we need for one month, so to speak.
I understand the principle there. It just, it just seems, you know, doesn't seem to agree with last year's numbers is all that I'm looking at there, you know?
Well, it was really tight last year. The year before, we had 1.5 million. We only drew down, I think, $750,000 last year. We went right up to the 1.5.
Okay.
And it was tight, so.
Okay.
You know, I don't want to get into a position where we're holding bills, not paying bills, that kind of thing. So it was a little tighter this year, so we just wanted to make sure to add the little bit of cushion so we're not holding, like I said, we're not holding vendors up in terms of receiving their payments. That was just.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate that explanation. I mean, that makes sense, that it was just a little too tight last year.
A little too tight, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Allison?
So, Mr. Nichols, given that scenario, looking ahead to next year's budget, 2019's budget, if the doomsday scenario plays out towards the end of the year, would we inspect, could we expect some kind of increase in this anticipated need?
If we're not able to achieve savings and increase revenues based, I mean, which we typically are able to do somewhat on our conservative budgeting, if it was a doomsday scenario, then it would be a tax anticipation under $4 million.
Okay.
Easily.
So that's another factor.
Which would be very unusual and that would be, you know, again, hopefully, we can mitigate that with all the suggestions that have been made this evening and, you know, we can prepare a little bit ahead and.
It's much more incentive to do that.
You know, hopefully, we have as much good luck as we did this year.
Hopefully.
Couple of bake sales.
$500 a cake.
How about an administration bake tank?
Oh, boy.
Joe makes great macaroni and cheese. We can sell that.
Other comments or questions? Hearing none, Ms. Frank on the resolution authorizing the tax anticipation note?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz? Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution carries. Next item on the agenda is resolution adopting various insurance needs for policy year 2018, 2019. Ms. Frank, please.
Resolution for various insurance needs for policy year 1118 through 1119.
Is there a motion, a second, to approve this?
Second.
Hearing a motion, a second. Mr. Nichols?
Yeah, thank you. This resolution is to approve the necessary insurance policies for the City of Williamsport's 2018 budget year. As indicated in year information, Henry Dunn was able to secure a competitive renewal for the city's non-workers comp insurance policies for amounts that is within the approved 2018 budget. And the Sims Agency was able to secure renewal quote for our workers' comp that is also within the approved 2018 budget limits. It was actually approximately $5,000 less than what we were, what the premium was for this year, so that's a good thing. I provided, or Joe provided you with a letter from our insurance consultant, Jill Nagy, who is recommending, you know, these renewals and after a review of what they, the various insurance agencies brokers have provided to us, and she was satisfied to give you a recommendation for approval. Again, we still need to update some of our coverages in terms of property valuations, one of which is Bowman Field because of all the additional investments that's made in there, so we wanted to tackle that after the first of the year. And again, she also wants to continue to have a dialogue with administration and council on risk assessment as it relates to, you know, our coverages. We did, as we did last year, we increased our umbrella up to $5 million and have cybersecurity insurance, so that's a good thing. But she would like to have a dialogue with administration and council as to our strategy for renewals in 2019.
Thank you, and this was reviewed by Finance.
This was reviewed by Finance and forwarded to the full body of council with positive recommendation. Majority of the discussion at Finance centered around the concept of an RFP for our insurance coverage, which we have been talking about for two years now, and we still haven't quite gotten there. As a result, Ms., Mrs. Frank actually put a discussion about an insurance RFP on the, I believe it was the second meeting in March's agenda, looking into 2018 to try to encourage us to begin discussions earlier this year. There, there's no reason to think, both according to Jill Nagy, our solicitor in this regard, and to our, the administration, that is to say, our Finance Department, Bill and Joe, that there's anything out of line about the costs and the increases to our insurance costs this year. However, it's never a bad idea just to make sure that we are getting the best value for our money and also getting the sort of coverage that we absolutely require. That is partly the responsibility of Ms. Nagy, but it would not hurt to engage in RFP process. So Finance will be looking into that earlier this year than we have in the past, and hopefully we'll be able to secure an RFP process for 2019. That said, we forwarded the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, Ms. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes. The resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe, let me make sure I get all of my check marks in place. I believe that brings us to number 12.
Number 12.
Does that seem right?
That's what I had.
Okay. Resolution to prohibit the location of a category four licensed gaming facility. Ms. Frank, please.
Resolution to prohibit the location of category four licensed gaming facility within the City of Williamsport.
Can I have a motion, a second, to approve this resolution?
So move.
Second.
Hearing a motion, a second. Oh, I'm listed to present this. So council received from multiple sources, actually, but including the solicitor notification about the passage of the law that allows category four licensed facilities to be located in municipalities, i.e. mini casinos with up to 750 slot machines and 40 table games, and the one-time-only opt-out provision that the law allowed for. And said, you basically have six weeks, I think it was, more or less, to make a decision. And the decision in one direction is a permanent decision. If we do nothing, it's a permanent decision to more or less let the state make a decision whether or not a mini casino is located in the city. Fine, if we choose that. The other decision is a decision to keep local control about future decisions, which is to say opt-out is a possibility only right now, or by December 31st, but we can always revoke the opt-out if a specific proposal comes to the city that leads to the desire to revoke that opt-out and accept or encourage even a mini casino to be located in the city. And so, you know, I think the discussion on council was, let's have a discussion about it. And part of the discussion revolves around that, do you maintain local control or do you give up local control over the decision going forward? So part of it is maybe about whether people would favor a mini casino in the city. That's part of the equation. And if you believe that it's a bad thing, absolutely, then you'd probably want to opt-out. If you believe it's a good thing, absolutely without condition, you'd want to not opt-out. If you think it depends what, you know, circumstances affect whether it's a good thing or a bad thing, then the question is, does opting out make sense so that you can maintain local control? With the conversations I had with individuals, nobody made, told me how they were, well, maybe one or two did, but I don't have a sense of how this would turn out by any means. But I committed to my colleagues that we would put this on the agenda so that we could have the conversation. But I really think it's those three options. You're either don't think it would be a good thing for the city, you do think it would be a good thing for the city, or you're not sure. And then, you know, that would affect what you think about this temporary decision to opt-out or the permanent decision to not opt-out. With that as the presentation in place, I believe this was referred to the Finance Committee. It probably would have been sent to E R C, but there wasn't a meeting scheduled given the timing. So, Ms. Mealy?
Finance did review this item. It was labeled on our agenda as discussion. We did not make a motion in particular to send it to the full body of council. However, we did have a rather healthy discussion about the, about the topic. And I will defer to other members of Finance for further comments here shortly because we all had had a lot of thoughts about this, and I think that's appropriate. But to, we did wind up being of the opinion, it seemed, that, that a lot of the issue hinged on the whole concept of being able to opt-out now and opt-back in in the future if we so choose, whereas if we do not opt-out now, we will not be able to do that at any point in the future. And I know that Mrs. Katz had requested that perhaps if we inserted that as one of the clauses in this resolution, she would feel more comfortable with, she might feel more comfortable with moving forward with it. So I'm actually working at the moment on text for that in case we should choose to insert another clause into the resolution. So I'm actually working at the moment on text for that in case we should choose to insert another clause into the resolution. Um, my, uh...
Do you mind if we pause a second and ask for clarification for solicitor of his understanding of, of the state law on that issue of permanence of opt-out versus opt-in, local control?
Dave Smith was the one who worked on this, so I really didn't look at the law, other than I know that you have to make a decision by...
And it was my interpretation. You, you read his interpretation, as we all did, I'm sure, um, and is your interpretation of his email that consistent with mine?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mealy.
Um, so, that is to say, for, um, I can't, as I said, I can't offer you a recommendation from finance. For my part, my, my inclination would be to take the more conservative path on this one, opt-out at this time. If we meet a proposal that, uh, that appeals to us in the future, we, we may opt back in. As, um, as Mr. Allison pointed out during our discussions, both Loyal Soc Township and State College have currently opted out. That indicates to me that there is a healthy number of communities opting out at this point, and that, um, that makes it unlikely, it would seem to me, that we will be completely excluded from further, from future offers. If, if a large number of municipalities in Pennsylvania are opting out at the opt-out point, then I think that we would have ample opportunity, if we so choose, to opt back in at some point in the future. Once again, that's purely my opinion, but I, but I'm inclined to support the opting out at, at this point and, and, and look into it in, in future if it merits another examination.
I believe I read a couple of weeks ago, it was over 200 municipalities across the Commonwealth that already, at that point, opted out. Mr. Allison.
Yeah, and that's, that's being added to daily. Um, one article I brought up was when it first passed, the county commissioners talked about it, and there, there's a lot of unknowns, a lot of confusion, um, a lot of study that needs to be done. It needs to be done quickly, but, um, the ban, the, the opting out can be done one time. And the state said, gave a, a time limit on it, and it's by the end of this year. If it's lifted in the future, it can't be reinstated. So, um, the mayor's indicated he's strongly in favor of it. Um, what, I, I would suggest any municipality, and this isn't speaking about how I'm going to approach it in the future, but, um, any municipality that is going to consider it, and especially one like Williamsport, who's landlocked and limited as to where we could put something, something like this, is going to have to do a complete zoning study to find out what, uh, possible areas there are. Do, do the zones match with available, uh, land? And the size of this, um, the mini casino, um, I, I haven't been able to track down all the facts on, on these things, so it's going to take a little bit of, a little while. I ha, I found, I have found the law online. Um, the first, there's some 900 pages. A lot of it's redacted, but you have to, of course, we, we could go to our local legislator and probably get the pertinent facts when we get the time for that, or the, the administration could rather. But, um, the, the size of the casino, all the, all that is going to affect, um, any potential revenue it brings in. So there's a lot of that kind of legwork, but I just want to disabuse the notion that somehow this council is anti-business because we are potentially opting out for this, at this time. As Dr. Williams, or, uh, Ms. Mealy noted, Loyal Soc is not anti-business. They're, they're pro-business, as pro as you can get. State College is a progressive community. They're not anti-business. They're taking a wait-and-see and study. We've said it over and over and over again. Process produces product, not product first, and then let's talk about the process. Let's move through it if, if that's council's intention, especially if that has to be the administration's outlook. But I see this, this is a different kind of business. It's not like Kohl's coming to town. This is a business that's regulated by the state, highly regulated, and watched over, and punished if things are done wrong because of past experiences with the gambling industry. You know, let's, let's call it what it is. For many people, probably the vast majority of people that use these services, we had this conversation earlier, it's entertainment. But there is a segment that it becomes an addiction. There's also a segment, um, that relates to crime, and studies have shown that increases and other problems associated with it. So that needs to be dug into, and this gives us, uh, the administration time to do that, council as well. But, um, I, I think it's a prudent move, and so do, do a lot of other communities in Pennsylvania.
Other comments or questions? Mrs. Katz.
When we discussed this at finance, a lot of people don't understand that opting out, and this took, I, I mean, the way Joe Pavlock went through this, I mean, it was, I mean, your whole statement was, was really good but funny, okay, as far as opting in, opting out. It was, it was trying to get the clarification. Opting out does not mean that it's, it's, it's done. When this came to us, I think people have got to understand that we were not given enough time to really study this. Uh, this is something that I think we really have to look into and be very careful of what's going on. But the other, the other side of the coin, and I keep on saying this, uh, from a little bit of what we understand, we would need, what, a thousand to 1,500 car, spaces for cars? And I think you said that we would need 100,000 square feet for the casino itself. Uh, that's a huge property, and where do we have that within the city? It's definitely, I mean, I know the mayor said downtown. There's no way in downtown that we have that kind of space. So, you know, it, it's something that we really have to study and, and ask a lot more questions of what is this all about? Go to other casinos, find out what the problems are, what, what occurs in that area. Is it, is this going to create more problems for our city? And that's, I think that's where we want to go with this. We want more study with this, so we don't make, you know, a rash decision. I think that's, you know, I think that's, I think we're making a smart choice here in studying this, this whole process. I mean, we can make money on, on the, the, uh, the property taxes. We could, we could get employment. I mean, there's some positive sides, but those positive sides can really turn into negatives rather quickly if we aren't careful how this is done.
Thank you, Mrs. Katz. Mr. Henderson.
There are a lot of elements to this. Um, I will just address a few, just the, the moral component. As you would expect from me, um, I run an addictions program every Friday night at our church. And, um, in my personal opinion, and I know I may, uh, not be a majority in our, uh, society as a whole, but maybe I am. In, in my opinion, I'm not sure it's justifiable to recognize drug addiction as an enemy to our society while at the same time perhaps inviting potential gambling addiction. I'm not comfortable with that. On top of that, is it, is it right for us to hope for some revenue to solve our financial woes, which would come on, uh, come from a, a industry that preys on people who have a lack of self-control? And, and I know that's not, maybe that's not the majority, but this is an element. Uh, and, and for that reason, I'm not, I'm not comfortable. I don't think that promoting the gambling industry is healthy for the family climate that we desire here either. And of course, uh, you know, I'm, I'm saying all these things. You know, I'm a pastor, uh, and so this is something that, that I feel strongly about. If there is a motivation to permit casinos, um, it should be simply on the basis of individual liberty, not on potential revenue, in my opinion. And so, uh, those are my thoughts on this. Uh, I, I intend to vote in favor of this measure for that reason.
Thank you. Mr. Nubiallo.
I've probably spoken to more people about this issue within the last two weeks than any other one issue that I can recall in my six years on council. Most of those people actually came to me and asked me to, to opt-out. Uh, but there was a couple of points I wanted to raise, and, and maybe Norm can add, factor in something out, and if I'm not exactly correct. As I understand it, these licenses are going to be put up for auction.
That's what I understand.
All right, then, and, and any license, any currently licensed facility can bid at those auctions. That doesn't necessarily mean that there's going to be a facility in Williamsport, because whoever obtains those bids isn't necessarily going to be flying to Williamsport or any other particular city at this point in time. So that's just one thing I wanted to raise. Is that relatively correct?
The only restriction is it can't be within a certain radius of an existing facility. I believe it's 25.
25.
Okay.
So that's why I assume this part of the state, someone would look at, because the nearest casinos are the Harrisburg area and whatever in Wilkes-Barre, and then the Indiana area. But if you notice, none of those three are in a major city. The whatever in Wilkes-Barre is in one of the townships. It's not in the town of Wilkes-Barre. It's not in Scranton. So, you know, as a practical matter, would they put one in the city of Williamsport, even with just our existing zoning, I would doubt it.
Another couple of quick thoughts. Number one, I think that, uh, I find it personally kind of difficult to support any measure that I think has the potential of adding to our crime in the city. That's probably the biggest sticking point for me. Also, just some other thoughts that are just sort of maybe philosophical, if you'll allow me, but, um, these facilities tend to often draw, or at least, I don't, don't even want to say target, to be fair, but for lack of a more accurate term, they tend to target the elderly, the poor, uh, those who are in some cases hoping against hope to hit that jackpot, you know, and I'm going to just, I'm going to clear myself of all my financial concerns. I think those things are, are a concern that I think fall in line with what Mr. Henderson had to say there as well. Uh, I think something like this would be more of a quick fix as opposed to a long-term sort of resolution to some of our problems here in town. I think other locations, as was quickly mentioned, are, are a bit more logical. Mostly people that I spoke to actually suggested, uh, the White Deer Golf Course, or the mall, or someplace that has a bit more space available to them, so we might, you know, look at situations like that. And the last one I wanted to raise was the issue, as that was Mr. Patterson, Allison raised, was, uh, business-friendly. Maybe we've forgotten about Kohl's, Panera Bread, Bootleg Barbecue, the Liberty Arena, which is now about to expand and add more business at the same time. The food trucks, uh, the East Gateway Project, the Pine Park Avenue Project, and I mentioned to Mrs. Katz earlier today, uh, how mu, I don't think we can even count on two hands the number of certificates of appropriateness that we have provided for numbers of business in this town to allow them to further their opportunities. So I don't see any reference or any connection with this body to a lack of respect for business. I guess that's my two cents, Ruth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nubiallo. Um, I, I'm going to end up supporting the opt-out, but let me say that, that does not reflect a decision that I've made about whether the net positive or the net negative of a mini casino exists, right? If, if it were to be located in the city. In other words, it's a temporary decision. There's a specific proposal. I'll look at that proposal and I'll go deeper. I mean, there's research out there that people, I appreciate, have made available to me, um, that talks about the, the pros and cons. I mean, there's the, the social impacts, um, some of which are positive, adding to quality life or entertainment opportunities, some of which are negative. There've been at least correlations, if not causation, of things like divorce or bankruptcy. Of course, others have mentioned other forms of abuse, even child neglect sometimes gets associated with it. I want to dig deeper into those questions before I made a, a permanent decision. There's economic impacts, right? Lot of discussion about tax revenue, um, or jobs that are, are potential there. Um, on both sides, pros and cons to that. On the con side, um, there's less money left over in people's pockets for other businesses that exist in the, in the city, whether that's restaurants, or chocolates, or, or jewelry, or, or, I don't know. I can't think of a fourth thing.
Other forms of entertainment.
Well, other forms of entertainment, thank you. There are environmental impacts even, um, some of which are positive. They're associated with things like, um, uh, communities that do more to conserve their history or, or their cultural heritage, um, that have more tourism opportunity and, and associated fields. There's also cons, right? There's more traffic, um, which can be a problem. There's maybe more, uh, crowds or, or reduced air quality. I mean, so there are pros and cons. I'm not making that decision. I, I know other, I respect other people who've gotten further along in that discussion than I am, um, but I'm not making that decision. I, I want to maintain local control. Here's the other thing that's guiding my thoughts on all of this. There is no single development project that is the fix-all, be-end-all of our structural, uh, budget deficit. We're not bringing in a development that solves our problems, that makes the world a perfect place. It's not happening. It is impossible. Kohl's didn't do it. Liberty Arena didn't do it. A casino's not going to do it. Real economic development is slow. It's boring. It's hard work. It takes a long time. We're working on all of that in a business-friendly kind of way. It doesn't make headlines. Maybe a casino can be a piece of that, but by the way, even if we said yes, we didn't opt-out tonight, even if the auctioning occurred on schedule, even if somebody won an auction for a license, just did their due diligence and decided Williamsport's the place, even if there was a piece of property ready to go to build on it, and they built it and opened and started, uh, take, uh, entertaining their patrons in a way that created revenue and they started paying their tax bill, that didn't solve the 2019 budget that I, the problem that I talked about, much less the long-term structural deficit. Just not happening, anybody promises it would, is lying out their teeth, period. But that's not the decision I'm making night, tonight either. I'm, I'm wanting to maintain the ability to make a future decision, and that's why I'll support the opt-out. Any final comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Nubiallo.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz. Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Uh, yes, uh, and the resolution carries. Uh, next item on the agenda then is 15 resolution authorizing a memorandum on understanding between the city and the sanitary authority. Kind of a motion in a second to approve the resolution.
Don't move.
I was worried there for a second.[1753.28][1753.32](laughing). This holiday, how are you this evening?
Oh, I'm good. How are you? Finally got to me.
Again?
Again.
Yeah.
Let's wrap it up.
Only an hour and a half left.
Okay. I'll see you all tomorrow. This memorandum of agreement is between the Williamsport Sanitary Authority and the City for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Coordination Services. The sanitary authority's personnel will provide professional services to ensure MS4 permit requirements are completed efficiently and timely. WSA will conduct regular meetings, prepare agendas, and provide written summaries. The sanitary authority will also prepare, submit, and respond to comments for the annual report to be submitted to the Department of Environmental Protection. of Environmental Protection. This memorandum of agreement is in the amount of and not to exceed $4,750. This was reviewed by, by the Finance Committee with a positive recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Mealy.
Finance did forward this to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. The, the, pretty much, this, this is a very similar deal to the arrangement that we had with the county while the county was providing these services. Now that the county is no longer able to provide these services, the, the Water Authority has agreed to step in in the county stead. And during our discussions, we basically, Ms. Halliday mentioned that if the Water Authority does, as planned, absorb stormwater responsibilities as well, this ordinance, or this resolution will not be necessary. The issue is that, since all of that is still somewhat in limbo and there is still some Ts to be crossed and Is to be dotted, this is a necessary item to make certain that, that we're covered for our stormwater, for our MS4 management if the Stormwater Authority does not go into effect as quickly as we think. That said, the, the, the funds are the same as what we were paying the county, correct?
Correct.
Moving forward, and, and of course, we are hoping that there will, the MS4 coalition is, is not currently active, but we're hoping that they will re-coalesce in some force, some form or another. Excuse me, Ms. Halliday?
We are a partner with Loyal Sock Township.
Yes, we are a partner with Loyal Sock Township. But we're hoping that, that perhaps other municipalities will, will see the light and join us here at some point soon on this issue.
And if it helps at all, Loyal Sock Township, this was passed by their board in front of my, what I understood today, speaking with Chuck Hauser, DuBois Town as well as South Williamsport plans to have this before their board next week, I believe.
Oh, great, excellent. I, I hadn't realized that we were, that there were actually still four members coming, coming forward. So that's great, good. Anyway, positive recommendation and, and hopefully things will move quickly enough with the Water Authority on the Stormwater Authority that we actually don't, don't need to ever put this to use, but just in case.
Thank you. Other comments or questions, Mrs. Katz?
This did come to Public Works.
Yes.
And we did discuss it at Public Works. The permit that is carried for this is a five-year permit, which with the coalition, we were paying a little less because there were more people in the coalition at the time. Because there's, there's less people, we are paying a little bit more. The permit does expire in October of 2018, so we do have a year to go with this. Hopefully that when things get more organized, maybe the rest of the coalition will come back into the, the fold. They were just used to the county taking care of the MS4 program. And as, as we stated before, MS4 has a ton of paperwork, a ton of rules and regulations, and you have to have someone that's going to, a dedicated person that's going to take care of that, that, all the, all the, the paperwork that has to be filed continuously. And it makes sense that the Water Authority takes this over. The county could no longer really afford this. It was like a revolving door with the, the people that they had doing the MS4 programs. These were good people, but again, it was a revolving door. And this is the perfect place where it should be because of the situation involving water and sewer and everything else. So I'm happy that the Water Authority did take upon themselves to take over this permit and work with it. And as we said, this might be a moot point in a couple of months. So, but we do have to, we have to take on this cost right now.
Any further comments or questions? I just want to make sure we clarify for the record. It's easy to say Water Authority versus Sanitary Authority when you mean the other one. This agreement technically is with the sanitary authority.
Sanitary Authority, technically, yes.
I think I started us all saying the wrong one, so my apologies.
Authority.
Authority, yes. Any final comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Nubialo?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution carries. Next item on the agenda is resolution authorize execution of bid award for design services for Brandon Park. Mrs. Frank, in short form, please.
Resolution to authorize the execution of bid award for design services of the Brandon Park Rehabilitation to Stahl Schaefer Engineering LLC.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, a second to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion, a second, Mrs. Halliday?
Yes. This, the resolution is to award the Brandon Park Rehabilitation Design Services to Stahl Schaefer Engineering LLC. The administration requested proposals for design services, design services and accepted proposals on November 13th of this year. City administration ranked the submitted proposals based upon technical qualifications of the firm and staff, stability of the firm, past experience with similar projects, and methodology. The highest-ranked proposal was Stahl Schaefer Engineering. The design for Brandon Park will include a nature play area, new pathway, rehabilitation of the ADA parking, lighting system, resurfacing of the tennis court, interactive educational kiosk, as well as a bio-retention pond which will serve as a best management practice and count for our MS4 credits. The amount of this design and documentation preparations is in the amount of and not to exceed $61,978,000. This was reviewed by Public Works as well as Finance Committee with positive recommendations.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Katz.
When this came to Public Works, we realized that this is the engineering company that is doing this is going to oversee the, the whole project. And after the design is completed, they will also be the inspectors of this, this project. The one thing that we did want to add on to the resolution was technical services and construction management.
I, I, I used the wording that was in the actual proposal for itself, which was for design and contract document preparations. However, it was part of the requirement for the RFP that they will, this will include the inspection during construction.
That's the only thing.
So it's within the contract.
This is what we wanted to clarify, that this was going to be done. We're happy that this is going to get started and this will come to us with the full project as far as the layouts and everything goes. This is a new engineering company and, but the, the recommendations come highly because they do a lot of nature play. So this is why this is also done, because of the nature play program with, with the, with Brandon Park. So we're looking forward to this getting started. And this was, this was a positive recommendation, yes.
Thank you very much. Ms. Mealy?
Finance also forwarded this to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. In discussions in finance with Mr. Nichols in particular, $61,000 is pretty much twelve per, yeah, not, yeah, twelve percent, excuse me, of the $500,000 that we will in total be spending on Brandon Park. That is to say, we have a $250,000 grant from DCNR and $250,000 allocated from our community development block grant funding for this project. Consequently, this amount, $61,000, is in line with what we would be projected to spend on design and construction management services, which is what's proposed in this contract. The, the funding is actually going to come from the community development block grant side of the equation, of course, because we won't see most of the DCNR funding until we begin the, the construction phase, I'm anticipating. But the, this, this company is supposedly has quite a bit of experience in the nature play element of, of the construction work that we're doing at Brandon Park, which will come in very handy. I, I think that's experience and that is not unusual perhaps, but that not all the, the companies that, that put in bids had, had that level of experience. Part of the reason that we evaluated this company based on technical elements rather than exclusively on cost, which is the wisest way perhaps when you're looking for a complex service to, to go about things.
What's also really unique about this contract as well is that they do have two nature play experts that will be working on this project as well. One is actually a landscape architect and then the other one is actually an educational, childhood education expert as well. So it goes along with the design aspect and also the educational kiosks that the kids can learn from as well.
True.
Any additional comments or questions, Mr. Nubial?
More of a clarification, and maybe Mr. Luvin can respond. And this came up, and will come up with the issue at Way's Garden as well. Which takes precedent? A not-to-exceed component or a design order change component?
It could be design order change. What if it exceeds the amount? I believe it would have to come back to council to prove the amount.
That would be my, that was my next question. Does it come back to this body?
It'd come back to this.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Nubialo?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution passes. Next item on the agenda is accept for filing. We have the Finance Committee meeting minutes of August 8, 2017, and October 24, 2017. We have the finance, city's financial audit for the 2016 fiscal year. Can I have a motion, a second to accept these for filing?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion, a second, comments or questions? Just note that as, as per usual, Finance Committee reviewed the audit at their last meeting, and all the members of council have it and probably can direct their questions either to members of Finance Committee or to members of Finance Department. With no other comments or questions, Mrs. Frank on accept for filing?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Nubialo?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and, and those are accepted. Announcements, the next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held on Thursday, January 4th at 7:30 PM in City Hall Council Chambers. Although I'll note that we have our reorganizational meeting on, help me out.
January 2nd.
January 2nd, which is a Tuesday at 7:30 PM. My bad memory, this late at night. And, and which, oh, is it all, never mind.
It's on there.
I was jumping ahead.
I might have lost my weight earlier, but I found it.
No, no. As long as one of us or two of us are organized at any given time, we're good. So, let's talk about the other upcoming meetings then. How about that? At, on Thursday, December 19th, at 10 AM is the Bladed Property Committee, at 4 PM is Brandon Park Shade Tree Commission, at 6:30 PM is Harb. On Thursday, December 21st, at 10:30 AM is Zoning Hearing Board, and at 4 PM is the Board of Health. Then I must, this isn't really appropriate for announcing meetings, but City Hall, do we have information on the closures of City Hall?
January 1st, of course, New Year's and Christmas is Monday, Monday, the 25th.
Okay. And so just the public should be aware of that. If anybody is still awake, then the reorganizational meeting, huh, who knew? It's on January 2nd at 7:30 PM in 2018. It seems so far from now. And then we'll get to our meeting on the 4th. So finally, that brings us to the end of our agenda this evening. And I'll note, we have had a lot of patient people to help listen and, and work through that this evening. And so thank you, both administration and, and members of the general public who've been patient through all of this and hopefully enjoyed the show. Are there comments here at the end of the meeting and in the end of the year for members of council? Mr. Allison?
I haven't gotten through all of the city, but there's some really beautifully decorated homes that people spent a lot of time on. And as well as Brandon Park is stellar, there's new decorations in there and LED lights, which is a, a nice movement there. And the downtown looks great. So a lot of, a lot of beauty out there this season.
Here, here. Other comments from members of council? Comments from the administration? Or the treasures?
[inaudible]
Absolutely.
Loyol Sock Creek is actually being nominated as River of the, or Creek of the Year. And I just hope everybody can get online and Google and vote for Loyol Sock Creek, as this is a very great nomination. There's been a lot of work that has been done. There's a lot of recreation that has happened on that creek. So please vote for your local creek.
Thank you very much. Comments from the general public? You sat through the whole meeting and you don't want to say anything? God bless you both. Really. With that, let me say thanks to everybody here for your hard work over the course of the year on behalf of the citizens of Williamsport. On, speaking on their behalf, it is much appreciated. And personally, I hope each and every one of you has a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year, and even Bill, I hope, you know, you have some fun at your bowl game. And I'll, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.